We will call to order the special called meeting for the Board of Trustees today, February 21st, 2023. I will alert you to the fact that there was an unfortunate switch in typing in 1A is the adoption of the agenda. It should be the call to order. We will, we are called to order so that now our first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Point of order, can we have discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, so from the last meeting, we had, the last meeting for a special call for February 13th, Ed was elected chair. That's not taken out because of what the FOIA violation.
And so you are suggesting that you would like him to chair this meeting?
Ed was elected chair, so we don't, and also I would like to make an amendment to the agenda to where.
Well, I think we have to do one at a time.
Okay, yeah, so yes, Ed should be chair.
All right. Do we have a legal ruling on that?
At the last meeting, we determined we were going to do it again because the agenda was not posted correctly.
Correctly.
Yes, can we look at the, um, the meeting minutes from September 12th of last year?
I believe most of that was discussed in executive session.
September 12th.
Okay.
2022. Do you have those available for us? Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, I'm waiting for the minutes for September 12th. I want to recall, uh, recall our information from September 12th, 2022. We had a FOIA violation back in July, and then September 12th meeting, we actually had something that came back that said that we need to, um, just vote on the things that were messed up with the FOIA violation. So I want to recall those minutes so we can have our briefing for how we should move forward right now.
And Ms. McKinney, while we're waiting for that, can I, um, add a clarification?
On his FOIA?
Related to this issue. I don't personally recall that we came to a conclusion that we were going to redo the entire meeting, but that precedent and only redo the issue that had been in violation of FOIA. And so that would not cause us to revote for a chair.
Just vice chair?
Just suspension of policy or vote for vice chair. Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Calhoun, your request for minutes there, Ms. Denny just sent them at 4:58. They're in the inbox of each board member and Mr. Kennedy, uh, in your inbox as well.
So, Mr. Calhoun, would you please point out from the minutes rather than us having to read through all of it, what you would like us to pertain to?
One second.
Mr. Calhoun, Ms. Dangerfield's also put them up on the screen at your request. I believe that's the minutes that you requested. Yes, sir.
Yes, it'll be 6A. So what was the legal advice given re FOIA compliance for info potential action back in September? And how do we proceed back in September when we had a FOIA violation in July?
Was it the same type of scenario?
Yes, it was.
I was not legal counsel at the time. I was not at that meeting.
Okay. So with the precedent of the board, as we could see from 6A going down to 7, to 7A, 7B, 7C, I believe, 7B. We only acted on the parts that was messed up by the FOIA. We did not revoke on, uh, redo the entire meeting, I like the meeting didn't happen. So we did take action at the Septem-, at the February 13th meeting, which we elected Ed Kelly as chair, and we don't need to redo that part. We actually only need to redo the part of the FOIA violation that will be, um, the, adding the suspension out of rules to the agenda.
I believe it was Mr. Kelly himself who actually, after speaking with the Attorney General, sent us all an email asking for a revote.
Did you speak to Attorney General? Well, no.
Mr. Kelly?
It was, uh, I, I spoke with Ms. Paylor, and, and we determined that the cleanest way to do this was to revote on all of the items because the agenda was, there, it was a little different of a scenario than what happened back in July, being, being that we had two different versions of the agenda posted inadvertently. We had one at the bulletin board and one online, uh, and, and one that we were working from, um, which is a little different than what happened back in July where an item was added to the Board of Agenda, the Board of Trustees Agenda after a Cal meeting on the same day. So I would actually say those are not the same scenario, but if, if, sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 that's, that's just not exactly correct. It was identical because the issue is adding something to the agenda post the agenda setting meeting, which is the same. It, they were different items, but either way, the suspension of policy was the only thing added post-agenda setting meeting. We always knew that we were going to vote on the chair. That was on every agenda, the one posted in the hallway, the one online, and the one that we had available in board docs.
So the, okay, maybe my memory could be incorrect. It was that the meeting was, the item was added after the board, the agenda setting meeting?
And that it wasn't.
Not same day. I thought it was a 24-hour problem, not a Tuesday to Monday problem.
Whether it's a 24-hour problem or a proper noticing problem, they're really the same. It is just that the public did not get the opportunity to review the agenda in the, in the, in the timeframe set by policy, whether it's 24 hours or it's just the issue that the agenda wasn't posted in all the same places. Or posted the same in each place.
So, Council Paylor, does the board need a motion to proceed with the current agenda or not?
I believe that motion was already made and seconded, or we haven't even got to the agenda yet.
Right.
Yeah. We're discussing who is chair.
We're still, we're still voting on the adoption of the agenda.
Once we figure out who is chair, then we can go into the amendment of the agenda. So looking at only the FOIA violation as well as, um, well, we can post a FOIA violation till later, but, um, whether we're going to actually, uh, elect a vice chair, because that's the only thing that's left from the FOIA violation.
So it, it was, it was, uh, this topic has been debated and, or discussed ad nauseam between the district, uh, between Ms. McKinney and myself, Mr. Kennedy, um, Anita and, and Alice, and I, you know, Pam and I are in complete agreement.
Yeah, but that doesn't, your agreement does not override policy. We are talking about policy. If you do not want to be the chair, you're welcome to resign.
It's not a matter of, uh, resigning, uh, it's a matter of the fact that it would seem that the, the previous meeting being improper, the cleanest way to clean that up would be to do it properly in public view.
There was a piece of the meeting that was improper.
Right.
The FOIA violation, which was adding something after the period. However, we did take a vote. Now, that was set a dangerous precedent that we would have set up here and add things on, and if we didn't, if we did not like the vote, we come back and say, we're going to just go ahead and redo it.
It could be illegal. I think if we don't get the proper opinion on the situation, because you can't undo a board action just because you think it goes one way or the other, we need to be very sure how we should proceed. And it's not about whether two people agree. Actually, three of us agree that it's improper. So what do we do with that? We need to have the right, um, legal weigh-in on this.
This is not, um, an executive session matter. Executive sessions are for personnel, contract, um, student issues. This is a procedural issue, and we can discuss it in the public.
There is a violation rather than be advised?
Alice, your microphone.
I, my advice is to have the meeting over again. Under FOIA, it was an illegal meeting because it was not properly noticed. So my advice is to have, to do it again.
The meeting was properly noticed. There was one item added that was not properly noticed. We cannot have a mulligan just because you didn't like the outcome.
My memory is actually what the issue was, was that everything was added per policy within the 24-hour period. It's that it was not displayed on the bulletin out in the lobby the same way that it was on the internet, um, in public access.
That is correct. So therefore, we just need to vote on the one thing that was not added for the public, and that's the suspension of policy BD, where we need to vote for a vice chair. We are wasting the public time.
I've given you my opinion, and it remains, it remains that because I look at FOIA, and it was not complied with. I don't have an opinion about your vote, so that's, I'm giving you my legal opinion.
This is the parliamentarian procedure issue, and that's why the board needs a parliamentarian.
Before we move forward, because just in the spirit of moving on, I get it, but we do need to note that, and it's gone now, the way that we moved forward, the last time the exact issue occurred is entirely different than the way we're moving forward now. I understand it's a legal opinion, and I'm fine with that, but for the record, it's entirely different eight or nine months later. That's highly irregular.
So is there any further discussion?
No.
Then I will call for the vote to adopt the agenda.
I'll file the motion to adopt the agenda.
Oh, we already did. Yeah, you did.
If you will cast your vote, and when it appears, confirm that it is correct.
I'm sorry, the motion was made.
To adopt the agenda.
Right, it was, uh, made by Keith to adopt the agenda and seconded by Leah.
It was not.
After that, Darren asked for an amendment to the agenda.
Motion by Keith Krabowski, second by Leah Watley.
Did everyone get the window to vote again? Okay.
And the motion passes to adopt the agenda. We will go on to the first item, which is the election of the board chair. Do I hear nominations for the position of the board chair?
Let's nominate Pam McKinney.
All right. Other nominations? I nominate Courtney Waters. Other nominations? Then the, um, floor is closed. We will, um, have the first nominees elect, um, vote for board chair, Pam McKinney, nominated by Ed Kelly. There is no second needed for a nomination. Cast your vote, and when it appears, please confirm that your vote is correctly recorded. And the motion passes. The next vote will be, uh, for Courtney Waters, nominated.
We don't vote on her because yours passed.
Okay. So long as that is Robert's rules of order, that we don't have to show that. Okay. Thank you. Then we will proceed to the next item of business, the election of the board vice chair. The floor is open for nominations.
Like to nominate, uh, Carlotta Bailey.
Okay. Are there other nominations? I nominate Darren Calhoun. Are there other nominations? All right, we will conduct the first, um, vote then with Carlotta Bailey as vice chair, nominated by Leah Watley. Cast your vote, and then please confirm its accuracy. And the motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'd like, I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Uh, Robert says yes.
Second.
Thank you, Darren. Um, all in favor, stand. And we'll change meeting hats. Special meeting adjourned. A one-second break, and we move right on for you.
I, I think public record is 5:30 for the beginning of Cal.
I think it's 5:15.
Um, I think today it was supposed to be at 5:30. Ms. Trudy? 5:15, okay. Oh, I'm not getting. Everyone ready? I'd like to call the meeting to order. Our first item is the adoption of the agenda, except for item 5E, because our presenter will not be able to be present today. I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Except for item 5E.
Except for item 5E.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Hello, again, um, so as far as the discussion, um, as far as other business 8A.
Uh, we've got a pending motion on the floor.
Yeah, I'm calling for a discussion after the motion in a second.
This is, but we vote on the motion first, and then we.
You do discussion, then you do the vote. It's motion, second, discussion, vote.
Okay.
All right. So, other business 8A, it did not go, uh, as far, as per policy BDE, it did not go through the individual board member and then liaison for, that's closely related to that category, which would be, uh, as well as, um, eight and nine, based on looking at paragraph eight and nine, um, I believe we should go ahead and get that moved to the SEC committee, pending the approval of the SEC chair.
Um, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to speak to that again?
Yes, please.
This was addressed.
Point of order. Don't we have a motion on the table?
We do, and I, and I already.
Second discussion.
I, I already, um, brought that up.
I mean, I guess I could.
So if we have a motion on the table, you need to vote on the motion, and then if you want to take it up and have an item moved up.
You can move, you can move to amend.
Motion, second discussion. I can have discussion on any motion that, that's out there.
That's the whole intention of the meeting. You don't just vote, you actually have discussion, and in fact, policy asks that you do not take a vote until you've heard all discussion.
Right, but the motion that's on the floor is the adoption of the agenda outside of, um, item 5E.
And we want to discuss why 8A is there for a number of reasons.
So then, do we amend the motion that's on the floor? No, you have the discussion.
We discuss this, and we can vote on the actual agenda. So.
Are you begging a mo-, motion to remove it?
There was a motion made, and now he wants to make another motion.
Well, he can make another motion. He's asking that we discuss the motion that's on the floor. We are discussing whether or not we want to adopt the agenda based on the fact that there are complications with this agenda that need to be resolved before we feel comfortable taking a vote.
The motion that's on the floor is to adopt the agenda, and with the exception of 5E, so that was the motion that was made and seconded.
We are fully understanding of it. But now they're having discussions.
Yes.
So then we need to add discussion for policy or for the agenda item 8A, so we need a new motion.
Well, he's not going to approve. He has the right to, to vote against the agenda. So what he's saying is he wants to discuss the item, you know, what items are on there.
So what I'm asking though, then do we need to, what do we do with the motion that's already on the floor?
We keep it on the floor. I want to discuss the agenda.
Okay.
My discussion.
Mr. Kennedy, would you like to address what he's, the, the issue he's bringing up?
Would I like to? So, um, my understanding is that, um, uh, this item, uh, should have come, would have normally come through the SEC, uh, the, um, committee, uh, the committee chair, Dr. Temple, that's the head of that, uh, that committee, uh, did not approve this coming through the SEC, uh, committee. And so then the way it got into, uh, other business was that there's a requirement to have a number of board members to elect to place something on the agenda. And so if you take a look at them, uh, the originators here under 8A, you see four board members, um, Ms. McKinney, Ms., uh, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Bailey, and, uh, Ms. Wally, that placed this under, uh, other businesses, the.
Can you direct?
The SEC liaison, uh, did not want to place on.
Right, can you direct me to the policy BDE where it says the four people, I know that's under, um, BD with the board, Board of Trustees, but actually under committee of the whole.
Or even that, that can happen as a way of bypassing a committee liaison where policy supports that.
Well, I actually spoke with Dr. Temple about this, and because I viewed it as a directive to the superintendent, which is the one employee that the board has a direct relationship, I thought it appropriate to put it under, um, other business since it's a directive to Mr. Kennedy and to his staff.
Sure, so then may I ask a follow-up question? So, in the original, so this meeting is supposed to be us redoing what we didn't do last time. Um, and so I guess it's just a point of clarification, this agenda has actually changed because on the February 13th agenda, there was only one originator, and so now we've got the additional four, but that would not have happened under normal circumstances had we not had the FOIA issue. So this is not the agenda that we would have taken up on February 13th, because you all have actually taken that week's time to add originators because you discovered it was actually put on the agenda out of policy.
Exactly.
We followed the timeline. That's not what she was saying.
Right. This is the, if this is. Go ahead, Ms..
You keep referring to a timeline, and we are referring to policy. You all are using, you are circumventing policy, and I want the public to be aware of who's doing this. This happens in cabinet. We are supposed to be using the original agenda from February 13th. This is a new agenda with new originators. We need to, we need to get to the business of education and stop all of this circumventing policy. This is taxpayers' money. You all need to stop it. May I call for the vote, Madam Chair?
Yes, um, can we, in discussion now and go to the vote, for the motion that's on the floor?
I wanted to.
The adoption of the agenda.
Excuse me, I wanted to say something. All right, I want to speak out as the liaison for strategic education because the item that is under, uh, other business, um, which is about the EL curriculum, um, being operated here in CCSD, is definitely a strategic education issue. It is not an other business issue. And I objected the last time for the February 13th agenda because the item was in the wrong place, and it was not presented in a written form, and, um, I objected to it being in that position. So we need to follow policy. Policy is important. We had a whole school board, uh, orientation this past week, and we need to follow policy, and we are not following policy.
So you can continue to circumvent. We'll vote.
Well, be that, oh, real quick, uh, Mr. Krabowski, can we, would you, uh, entertain a friendly amendment to your motion?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We can vote. I need a second. I just, I just want to get on.
Okay, closing the discussion, calling for the vote for the motion that's on the floor. Okay, closing the discussion, calling for the vote for the motion that's on the floor. Please check the screen and make sure that your vote is on and accurately displayed. And the motion carries. We'll move on to our next item, which is the election of the committee of the whole chair and agenda liaisons. Do I have any motions on the?
I'd like to make a motion to elect Leah Watley as the chair for the committee of the whole.
And I'd like to make a motion to nominate Darlene Roberson. Any more nominations? Okay, we'll take a vote on the first one. All right, the window is on the screen. Please make sure that your vote is accurately represented. And the motion carries. The next item is the appointment and approval of the agenda liaisons for policy and strategic ed. My policy liaison, I appoint Ed Kelly. And for strategic ed, I appoint Carlotta Bailey because of her current, she has worked in the classroom for 16 years and resigned her position just recently when upon getting elected to this. She works with our Head Start program. And I feel she has also a working knowledge of the EL curriculum, experience with it, coming from the school that she worked in. And I feel that she is the better fit for this position. Pending approval, do we need a second on those? I don't think so. We just, the board will vote to approve those two. Please look to see that your vote is accurately displayed. And the motion carries. Moving on to the next item, it's public comments. Item A, public comments in person according to the public comment policy. I did not receive a list.
Mrs. Wally, you have a list there in that orange folder, I believe. Yes, and Mrs. has a.
The names.
There were additional registers assigned, and Ms. Denny has those, and she's going to.
I see them.
Provide it.
So per policy, there's 30 minutes. I know that the last meeting, I opened it up. Right, right, I made the motion and the board voted in favor of allowing everyone. Unfortunately, we won't be able to do that tonight because we have a lengthy agenda. And already a delay in getting started with business. This one's correct, all right. This one's correct, okay. Thank you. Vice Chair Bailey, would you like to handle the public comments? In person and online.
First off, for the online comments, we had so many. The summary for that is EL comments 45, prayer at meetings one, for a total of 46 comments. And please come forward to the mic. You have.
Perhaps call three names at one time, and they can, that way we can keep it going.
They have one minute.
They have one minute because we're doing 30, right?
Okay, and you have one minute to make your statements. I call forth Brittany Wilkerson, Melissa Brewbaker, and Desiree Harden.
My name is Brittany Wilkerson, and I teach second grade at Hunley Park. It is my induction year, and like many things this year, EL was overwhelming at first. Despite this, I appreciated the scripted nature of the curriculum, allowed me to focus on the actual teaching rather than figuring out what to teach. Moving into the second half of the year, I now appreciate the script as more of an outline to guide and pace my teaching with room to make it my own to meet the needs of my students. In module one, second graders read about schools around the world, including doorstep schools on buses in India, boat schools in Bangladesh, and others. We discussed the challenges these students face as well as found similarities and differences between these schools and our own, thus expanding students' worldview and increasing their understanding of diverse cultures and perspectives. Entertaining a political agenda that seeks to censor our students' exposure to culturally relevant literature and diminishes their opportunity to become global thinkers does a disservice to our students and their futures. This undermines our efforts to provide students with the best education possible, and it goes against our school's mission to prepare them for a successful future. I urge you to continue supporting the use of this curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm back, and I will keep coming back as long as it takes to ensure our board makes the right decision to preserve EL. You continue to hear from a broad cross-section of CCSD principals, teachers, and coaches who believe in EL and see the transformation occur each day. You have an important decision to make. Do you support the majority of CCSD staff, or do you pander to special interest groups? I've become proficient at school turnaround work, and it is my passion. Help me to know that CCSD is where I should continue to use those skills. The district I want to work for never would deny history or deny our children the right to learn about it. Up to this point, I felt that the board and district team were working together to do just this. Please do not undermine the work that the superintendent and his team are trying to do to ensure that all of our students have access to high-quality educational experiences. And please do not rip the rug out from underneath the teachers, your teachers, coaches, and leaders.
Good evening, my name is Desiree Harden from Hunley Park Elementary School. Students are the heart of our work. This is the motto proudly touted by CCSD. Yet for decades, we have failed our students of color. We stand now in a position to honor and respect all of our students. Have you seen the smiles, tears, and triumph on our students' faces as they surpass even their own expectations? Have you seen the burst of confidence in our lowest-performing students as they realize that they too can be creators, researchers, and writers? For the first time, all of our students see themselves represented in their curriculum. For the first time, our Black and Brown students are growing at the same rate as their white peers. If you choose to revoke this curriculum, remove diverse representation, then you choose to honor some, not all, at which point you may as well change our motto to "Some students are the heart of our work." And to, and to our dedicated teachers, you are not lost and inadequate, as you were told last week. You are extraordinary, thank you.
Next up is Ms. Vanessa Odlan-Katachi-Gathers and Cameron Easley.
I'm the proud reading coach and a parent of a kindergarten student at North Charleston Elementary. When I first learned about EL, I spent countless hours, I mean countless hours in this curriculum, learning about it, and decided to bring my own child to North Charleston Elementary, where he is a student, and at that time was a failing school. Now, North Charleston Elementary is not a failing school. We, I truly believe that due to, this is due to our curriculum, our students are thriving, they're growing, and not only on standardized tests, but what they're doing in the classroom. I have never in my career, and I've been there for 11 years, seen our students do what they do now. If we want kids to be college and career-ready, isn't that what we want? Isn't that what the board, the district, we want our kids to be college and career-ready? And I believe if we follow the district's motto, that children are the heart of our work, we must think about it and follow the data and see that our children are growing. Our students deserve this curriculum. They deserve to see themselves in what we do every day. Thank you.
CCSD's mission is to educate and support every child in achieving college admission, a career, and citizenship readiness. I've been tasked to make sure every child is prepared for their future. If you ask colleges and companies what skills they seek in an applicant or employee, or ask parents what they desire for their children, they will likely identify the abilities to think critically, globally, problem-solve, collaborate with others, demonstrate professionalism effectively, and be a leader. I'm sure if you surveyed those 135 teachers mentioned at the last board meeting who represent only 7% of our teaching force, we have roughly 1,900 teachers in K through eight, they would likely share similar skills. It is not surprising that EL lessons address those skills, which are also reinforcing literature and discussion among our students. This is a well-designed curriculum with proven results. As an educator with over 20 years of experience, I cannot recall a time when I had to convince people to keep a great curriculum out of schools. Yet I stand here before you trying to appeal to the board to not eliminate this curriculum, but to keep it and make the right decisions for our students. Do what is right for the students of CCSD.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, I hope you had a good day so far. I'm Cameron Easley, and I'm from the school Hunley Park Elementary. I'm going to read, I'm going to be reading everybody the essay diary using the EL curriculum, so we can keep it. If EL wasn't here, I wouldn't know how to write this essay diary. On page 154 of Esperanza Rising, it said Mama arms was burning her cheeks for flushed red, and she doesn't wake anymore. Esperanza is worried about Mama because she keeps saying that she is fine, but Esperanza doesn't believe her. She took Mama to the hospital, and she had a fever from the dust storm, so now she has to stay home with her, with Esperanza. Mama felt scared and fine because she thought she was going to get better, but she got worse and worse. On page 154 through 155 of Esperanza writing, it said, "I'm going to lie down until the soup is ready because I have a headache." Thank you for letting me read this to you.
Next up is Sarah Burris, Kay Clark, and James Dallas. Please state your name when you come up, so I can make sure everyone is coming forward.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Burris, and I'm a first-grade teacher at EB Ellington, as well as a parent of three children in CCSD. I'm here in support of teachers having the option to utilize the EL curriculum in their classrooms. Since implementing the EL curriculum this year, the number of students considered high-risk in my class has decreased from 60% to 13%. In my 13 years, I have never seen growth like this. My students are thriving. They are writing poetry in first grade. They are experiencing books that incorporate all ways of life. They are learning good habits of character such as initiative, perseverance, and collaboration. And they are given access to decodable books to help them practice phonics skills. EL is helping our students to reach their goals. And teachers should have the option to utilize it if they choose to do so. Please do not take this opportunity to learn and be successful from our students. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Henry Clark, and I'm currently the vice president of the Student Council at Sullivan's Island Elementary School. I want to talk to you about EL education and how it gives value to my voice. I don't think I had this voice before learning about poetry. I was inspired to become a writer after reading the book of poems, Love That Dog. The way the author shared moments of everyday life with carefully crafted language and imagery was exciting. I want to do this, too. This year, we have read Esperanza Rising. I've learned about empathy and courage as we analyze this text using the Universal Declaration of Human Rights issued by the UN. This level of deep thinking taught me about listening to others' perspectives and POVs. We are now wrapping up a unit about the rainforest, which helps me look at the world around me and see value in it. My sister is a second grader. She learned from a book last year called The Most Magnificent Thing. That book taught her perseverance when things get tough. She still talks about it a lot. If you are against EL education, I challenge you to come sit in our classrooms, come learn alongside us, and see what we see. A curriculum that opens minds to multiple perspectives and changes the lives of us and our siblings. Are you afraid of change? I'm not.
Good evening, James Dallas, Principal at EB Ellington Elementary School. I come before you again this evening to urge you to preserve our EL curriculum. After last Monday's meeting, a board member stated on Live Five News that we're at odds when we really don't need to be, but also stated that we don't understand what others are coming from. That's why we need EL. Based on last Monday's meeting, it was very obvious where the majority of the speakers were coming from. Of the approximately 60 individuals who spoke, 55 of them spoke with fervor in favor of a curriculum to connect with all children. This issue before us is not about the facts. It's not about listening to the perspective of others. This is yet another clear example of a culture war that is designed to once again divide us and engage in this endless debate over the meaning of America and whose story matters. It is about an intolerance of the lived experience of many of our students and families. Consider the word woke, a word that has its roots in Black culture, yet has been co-opted as a symbol by those who wish to push back against social justice. This weaponization of words has become the talking points for some to rally around, perpetuating the control of a singular narrative. The lives of all children matter. I implore you to do the right thing and employ and preserve EL.
Next up is Beth Dellencoffer, Samantha Blake, and Carol Jean Smalls.
Superintendent, board members, good evening. I'm Beth Dellencoffer. I'm the interim principal at James Simmons Montessori School, and I've been with Charleston County for 19 years. It is my firm belief that there is no such thing as my child or your child. They are only children, and ultimately, we are all responsible for them. You are in a somewhat unique situation in that you hold a little bit more responsibility for the education of our CCSD students. Since I spoke to you last week, not one of you has visited my school, our school, or observed an EL lesson, or spoken with our teachers or coaches about implementing EL in our school this year. And for that, I'm disappointed. In my almost two decades in public education, I've never seen educators and students rally behind a curriculum as we've seen in the last few weeks. And I really urge you to listen to our teachers, heed their feedback, and bravely make decisions that are in the best interest of all of our children. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm standing in for Ms. Smalls tonight. My name is Alicia Tackett, and I am the literacy coach at Stono Park with over 20 years of experience, 13 of those years as a classroom teacher. I'm also the mother of two students in CCSD. The classroom teacher has the most influential role in a school. I have worked with teachers for the past year and a half to support them in implementing the EL curriculum. While it has not always been easy, we worked through implementation challenges because our teachers quickly began to see growth, not just. not just with test scores, but with student engagement. At the previous board meeting, there was a comment implying that teachers in certain schools must not know how to teach without a curriculum. The teachers I know are all intelligent enough to realize the benefits of using one of the highest rated curriculum in the country. The suggestion that those schools need the curriculum and that their students do not is extremely problematic. Are people really suggesting that black and brown students have different curricula than their white peers? If we say we make decision, decisions on what is best for our students, then there really should be no debate. Honor the hard work of teachers and support them by living up to your promise of consistency in the district. Otherwise, you risk teachers, parents, and students losing faith in you. Thank you.
Is Ms. Samantha Blake not here? Next up is Jennifer Bermudez, Kelly Stalkop, and Sarah Thompson.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Bermudez, a teacher at Mitchell Elementary, and I am back again to request that you keep the EL curriculum that teachers have worked so hard to implement. Last meeting, numerous educators, students, and parents stood before you and gave you reason after reason as to why we should continue the implementation of EL. If you decide to go forward with getting rid of this curriculum, you are showing that the viewpoint of educators, students, and parents in CCSD does not matter and that representing all students in a curriculum is not important. I encourage you to come into schools and see the amazing work students are doing because of this rigorous curriculum. According to CCSD's Vision 2027, you want all students reading on grade level by fifth grade. How will we achieve this goal when you throw out a curriculum before we can fully see the impact? Listen to the professionals and allow EL to continue to be used throughout the district. Thank you.
Good evening. Next school year will be a bridge year for the new ELA standards to allow teachers to unpack and understand what is required at each grade level. The following considerations and questions if EL is removed are: Do we want teachers to be learning a new curriculum and a new set of standards? Textbooks are written for the state who purchased the most. Alignment to South Carolina's standards at stated complexity and if they are included at all, needs to be determined at each grade level, which will take longer with an unknown curriculum. If we do not have a curriculum, how long will it take to vet books and materials to ensure a teacher is not sued under Bill H. 372 that the State House has passed and is now in the Senate? If a teacher in our school is sued because they created their own curriculum because we are with that one, will the district support them, especially with the 5% reduction in funds from the state on the line? It seems a removal of any curriculum at this time is problematic. Thank you, teacher.
Good evening. I am Sarah Thompson and I have been a teacher in CCSD since 1999. Head Start CD does not teach EL, by the way. I teach at Mitchell Elementary and Acceleration School as a first grade teacher. This is my second year teaching EL and my students and I love it. This is a research-based curriculum instead of some random piecemeal instruction found on the internet. The consistency within the district using this curriculum paid off when a student from North Charleston Elementary School transferred into my classroom. No instructional time was lost. I need to review this policy, it seems, from earlier. The board policy J, Instructional Resources and Materials states, nor may the superintendent permit instructional materials which do not reflect the multifaceted character of American society or present life in a true or realistic manner, or which do not contain the contributions of minority groups to the development of the United States. Materials may not be excluded because of race, nationality, or political or religious views of the author or publisher.
Next up is Jonathan Weidman, Dr. Amber Sines, and Kimberly Richards.
Good evening. Mr. Weidman could not make it this evening, so I'm going to speak on behalf of him. My colleagues are definitely covering most of it, so I changed what I wanted to say tonight. When you complain, it is in service of your ego. When you speak up, it is in service of change. Thank you, Waters, Roberson, Temple, and Calhoun. Thank you for speaking up. And Ms. Bailey, please do make sure the board knows that EL is not taught in Head Start. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Amber Sines and I'm the proud principal at Mitchell Elementary School. As an educator of over 23 years, I have taught both with and without curriculum, developed curriculum, and helped ensure the fidelity of curriculum in classrooms. Mitchell has an extremely strong and talented staff of teachers. I have watched my reading coach and teachers pour their hearts as they've learned, implemented the EL curriculum because they knew it would help ensure all the standards were being taught, high rigor, engaged our scholars, and also meets the individual needs as needed. I have watched our Mitchell scholars evolve over the past couple of years. They're reading high-quality texts, engaging in powerful conversations, writing in volumes I've never seen in my career. Most importantly, I've watched our scholars find their voice, just as you saw tonight with another scholar, also using the EL curriculum. As a mom of two boys who are older now, I would have loved for them to have had a ch- chance to have this curriculum. At Mitchell, our motto is whatever it takes for our scholars. I hope you do the same. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Latrice Smalls and I'm speaking on behalf of Kimberly Rig- Ri- Richards. I'm Latrice Smalls, the Assistant Principal at Stono Park. And I just want to quote, a quote from The Atlantic Magazine. It says, "Anywhere between 40 and 50% of teachers will leave the classroom within the first five years. Turnover in teaching is about 4% higher than any other profession." We know the feeling when it comes to teacher shortage here in Charleston County. The question is often asked, why do teachers quit? What has caused the teacher shortage? Could the reason be rooted in lack of consistency? Constant change with the curriculum that they are asked to teach? The Charleston Teacher Alliance recommendation is to give new curricula time to work before replacing them. As a board, I'm asking you to please give EL time before you replace it. Thank you.
Next up is Stephanie Span, Niddy Nadal, Kim Riggins.
Good evening, Stephanie Span, educator, parent. For you have a choice. You have a choice between making decisions based off of preference or making decisions based off of data. You have a decision to make. Will you make decisions that will help all students grow? Or will you allow stagnation to exist? Board, I stand here in support of EL curriculum. Change is hard, but if we want anything to grow, we must change. We must grow. EL causes educators to stretch their craft. We went through the change process and still go through it. But what we see and what you have seen time and time again coming to this stand are people who engage in the work and who want to continue the work. Not for some, but for all, because EL curriculum is good for all.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Day Dow from Honey Park Elementary School. I chose to share my poem to express why you should remove the EL curriculum. I want you to take a moment to think about time when you had someone or something that you missed and you express your emotions by writing. EL helps students express themselves. Here's my poem. My sister is far away. Owner, above that, it's hard for me to stay strong. I think about you night and day. Every day feels so great. I always thought you were the whip. Without you, from time to time, I feel like I don't sleep. My faraway sister, I can't resist it. I was inspired to write this poem because my sister goes to Fayetteville State University. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Is Kim Riggins here? Okay, next person is Deborah Davis Cummings, Bren, Brendan Pinkney, and Ally DeBrow.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to adjust this real quick. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Adesha Ivanova and I'm speaking on behalf of Dr. Davis Cummings, a wonderful principal at Edith L. Firesen Montessori School. At Firesen, we have witnessed a high level of engagement among our students using the EL curriculum. Our students are motivated and they're excited to learn during the EL time. We now have third graders who are experts and frogs. We now have fourth graders who are poets. We have fifth graders who have learned how to give peer feedback that is kind and positive and helpful. For the first time, we have a curriculum in which the students are excited about learning and our teachers are excited about teaching. We have seen amazing academic, social, and emotional growth among our students. We ask that the EL curriculum stays and plays in our district and is supported by the board as we work to close the achievement gap. That is our goal. We want to ensure that we serve all students with high-quality literacy education. And we think that EL is the way to do it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ally DeBrow and I am a teacher at EB Ellington Elementary School. I've been there for four years. I've been teaching for 38. I don't quit. Last week, four of my fifth graders spoke out about EL. They invited them to, how EL invited them to a, a special program. They felt connected through the characters of culture. They spoke about loving to read and they enjoyed a story about grit. Today, I invite you to hear about my students who have been impacted by studying informational texts of the rainforest. They have learned to decode sensory and concrete language through a variety of texts and infused their figurative language into their own personal narratives. The EL program and writing program welcomes all levels of students to grow and learn. I genuinely think that this program has impressed me with rigor. Rigor that all my children can, oh, sorry. They all have a vo- oh, my time, okay. I'm going to keep going. Through this scripted program for teachers, there is room for all students to use their voice in class as well as reach out to communities about their concerns. We have read historical fiction. I beg you to come into my class, listen to my students, read with them, sit alongside with them, be part of our program. Your time is up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Catherine Freely and I'm speaking on behalf of Deborah Davis Cummings. As teachers and teacher librarians, we often use books to help our students make sense of the world around them. And the EL curriculum uses our state standards to do just that.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Ms. Dr. Come, Deborah Davis Cummings already had somebody speak on her behalf.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, next up is Ethan Breschers, Day Jubilee Long, and Judith Condon.
Okay. Yes.
My name is Ethan from, my name is Ethan from Honey Park Elementary School. I wrote this poem through EL education and I hope you don't take it away. If EL was not here, I wouldn't have ev- even have written this poem. And then it turns into dawn by Ethan Breschers. When the night turns into dawn, lights, shadows, a new day has begun. Then comes night, then dawn, and yet again, a new day has begun. Then night, then comes dawn, and the day has truly begun.
Good evening. My name is Jubilee Leung. I'm a fourth grade advanced studies teacher from EB Ellington. As I engage with the EL curriculum each day, I think of three words: diversity, equity, and inclusion. Diversity means cultivating a wide representation of people, idea, processes, and experiences. Equity recognizes that we are born into unequal and unjust circumstances and these factors should not predict our ability to fail or succeed. Inclusion means creating the conditions that foster belonging, harnessing what makes us unique to strengthen our community and amplify our impact. If we take this curriculum away, I question what is really important to our school board. Will you give in and change plans every time a select group of people feel offended? Or will you fight for our teachers and students to have equitable education? The world around us is screaming diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we should too.
Speaking on behalf of Judith Condon and Angel Oak Elementary School. My name is Tim Heckle. I teach fifth grade at Angel Oak. And when EL was introduced, I was skeptical, guys. I thought it was scripted. It was going to take away my creativity as a teacher. But it wasn't long that my skepticism subsided. When I saw that it wasn't scripted, it, it was a structure from which to work. And it was a structure from which to build in creativity and build in joy from the students. And more importantly, my skepticism was relieved when students let me know it was effective. When my multicultural students wanted to read, wanted to know more, wanted to create monologues, they crushed them, by the way. We're comfortable discussing their feelings and were able to, what? Quote evidence correctly? That's insane! I knew it was effective. I have a feeling we all know that's not why we're here, though. It's not about effectiveness of the curriculum. It's about other stuff. But be smart, guys. Don't strap everything now. Look at little Langston over here. Come on.
Okay, next up is Kristen Lewis and Kelly White. And Monica Smalls.
Go ahead and go to the end of the page. It'll make up for the ones that weren't available.
Kristen Lewis, Kelly White, Monica Smalls, Daniel Odlan, and Danica Pierce.
Good evening. I'm Michaela Black and I'm speaking on behalf of Kristen Lewis. And I'm here to talk about how the EL curriculum has impacted me and my English honors class. No one is born with an understanding of the lives, experiences, and cultural backgrounds of others. These concepts must be shared in order to be learned. Our English teacher, Ms. Taylor, facilitates topics like these in our classroom through introducing captivating stories such as Summer of the Mariupolus and The Omnivore's Dilemma. Ms. Taylor's classroom is a healthy environment for sharing experiences, opinions, and ideas without being belittled or dismissed for expressing or differing or contrary perspectives. You're not just a number in our classroom. Each student has his or her own voice and is encouraged to use it. From a fantasy story tracing back to the roots of Mexican folktales to behind-the-scenes insights to the origins of our food and beyond, our class's learning repertoire has been quite diverse. If reading material that expresses history and truths about the world around us doesn't make you think, then what's the point?
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. I'll be speaking on behalf of Ms. White. I'm a proud parent of a fifth grader at Honey Park Elementary School. My child, my son, Cameron, has been at Honey since CD. I have been pleased with Honey's focus on improving in reading and math because- I want Cam to grow up to be a successful adult. However, I was sad to hear that a small group of people are criticized in the book selected at reading at Honey Park. Last year, when Honey's teacher began using these books, I noticed that what Cam was expected to learn is much more challenging than before. At the end of the year, Cam's C-ready results increased from his third-grade level of "That's not me expectation" to "Approaching expectation." Cam began reading that year at level one, below his own eye-readies, and now he's on grade level. I'm asking the board to please not vote against EO. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Monica Smalls. I'm the principal of Shakora Elementary. I will begin with, what is your why? Last week, you heard various stakeholders on why EO is inclusive for all. You also heard from the naysayers who don't have any knowledge about EO and have not given curriculum a chance to succeed. The main objective today is our why. Remember, students are the heart of our work. This is the ultimate why. Therefore, let me give you a mini lesson as to why EO is truly about. It's about connecting backgrounds, races, and genders to equitable opportunities that lend themselves to unbiased critical thinking and collective skills. Just think, all of you on this board are different by using the same curriculum, the bylaws of CCSD. How would you feel if the district takes away the resources that you have been using that are working without giving it a chance? Take a moment to recognize what EO has done for all students: increased academic and social skills, increased collaborative skills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Stone. I'm the lead teacher at North Charles Elementary. I'm speaking on behalf of Daniel Olden. As part of the foundational commitment set up by this board, I want to reference policy ACE, cultural competency. This policy defines cultural competency as learning new patterns of behavior and effectively applying them in the appropriate settings. It outlines the district effort to become more culturally proficient and, I quote, "incorporating differences in the curriculum where students must see themselves in their curriculum and their instructional materials." Not only does the EO curriculum value students as part of as an inclusive learning community, it allows them to bring their full identities to school where they are trusted and respected to be their best selves. The embedded social-emotional learning and cross-discipline, sorry, rigor, across-discipline approach of this curriculum aligns directly to the overall vision of CCSD. It provides equitable and inclusive learning opportunities for all students, and it is our responsibility as educators to prepare our students to compete in a global economy as informed and critical thinkers. The mission of CCSD is to educate and support every child, and EO does just that.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bianca Pierce and I am a sixth-grade ELA teacher at Smith and Pinkney Middle School. One thing I would like to point out is that when the students come into your classroom for the very first day, they are bewildered. They feel inadequate. They do not have the foundation that they need. The students that I teach today are not the students that came in my classroom on the very first day, and the students that leave my classroom and wave at me goodbye because they're going to summer vacation are not the students that I will be teaching today. They're holding fishbowl discussions. They're respecting each and everyone's personality and differences and opinions. They're doing table talks. They're being able to get a prompt with very little interjection from me and carry it and be successful. We celebrate all. In order to run, we need to first know how to crawl, then we need to know how to walk. Why are you trying to stunt them by not allowing them to crawl? If we're trying to make equity, please give them a chance. Thank you.
Next is Ryan Stone and Tara Wood.
Ms. Bailey, I believe that's 30.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you all for taking the time to come and express your views. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the superintendent's report. We only had 30. Thank you, ma'am. Not everybody got an opportunity this time. So, Mr. Kennedy, I'm going to turn the floor over to you now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wiley. So, this presentation relates to the three board goals that we have. This presentation talks about how we, as a system, monitor, should be monitoring those goals. So, let's go to the next slide, please. The first two slides, sort of like lead-in slides that we've used for probably a year. The first one here, when we began to talk about reading the winter of last year, we talked about approaching reading using these three pillars. One, rigorous grade-level instruction. You heard about some of that tonight with the EO curriculum. We talked about high-quality teachers and leaders, making sure that we recruit and retain and develop our staff, our teachers, and our administrators. You'll hear more about that during the budget cycle that's coming up when we talk about how we allocate resources to support the retention and growth of our teachers. And then, of course, the wraparound services. This is something that's come, really become prominent because of the pandemic and the tremendous needs that not only our staff have, but our students have, but also our staff. If you may not remember, but last spring, I think it was, we invested $14 million in ESS dollars for mental health services for both students and staff, and so we will continue that. And then, next slide, these are the goals. I'm not going to get into the details, but there are three goals, and I would contend that if you look across the country and you have districts that are not performing well by all students, that you would see goals in these three areas. One, in reading. Kids need to be able to read. Two, math. So, we have a goal with algebra. And then, the third one, college and career readiness. We need to have kids that they spend 13 years in our system. When they graduate from high school, they need to be ready for life after high school. That's what these three goals are about. Next slide, please. So, this line graph here is one of my two favorite graphs that I have that I present. I present this a lot, not just in board meetings, but when I'm out in the community. And what this represents, I'm going to spend a minute here because it's important, what this represents by racial groups, white students at the top, the red line, next line, the orange line, other, then at the bottom, the green line, Hispanic students, and the blue line being African-American students. It's a timeline going back to 2006 on the left-hand side and going up until last spring of last year. So, on the left-hand side, you can see for African-American students, in 2006, we had 16.9%, I think it is, of our students, African-American students that were reading on grade level according to the data that we have here. Now, a lot of people know and some people don't know that this is my second time in the district. So, my first time in the district was from 2004 to 2007. I came back here in January of 2018, which is a little over five years ago, and quite frankly, I was astounded to see that when I got back here in 2018, that on the right-hand side of this graph here, we were in 2020, 2018 timeframe, we were essentially the same place we were when I left here in 2007. The same schools, the same neighborhoods, the same family, different generations. We're continuing to do the same thing. And I've said this numerous times, in between 2018 and up until this time period, I've done a lot, a lot, a lot of research on this data, explored why it is that between 2006 to 2012, as you can see the slope of these lines, we were making progress, and then all of a sudden, we dropped off and we have not recovered. So, there are a number of factors for that, that progress that is. One of those factors was a common curriculum across our elementary schools. We lost that around the time period when this data started dropping off. So, the question is, why? In this time period, from 2006 until now, we have spent, as a system, we have tremendous numbers of programs that we put in place and that we have tried. We spend a billion dollars a year across all of our funding, so it's a billion dollars a year, and I know that because I used to be CFO. And we've had some incredible leaders, both in our classrooms, in our school buildings, and in this seat here, and we've had board members that have the best at heart for kids, yet we have not made any progress. So, we have established these goals to turn that around, and I want to talk about a monitoring process that we think, we being staff, that's the last component of what we need to do in terms of being able to bring structure to what we need to get accomplished. Next slide, please. So, again, three goals: goals in reading, algebra I, college and career readiness. Goals in reading because only 23% of African-American students, grades three through eight, read on grade level. The numbers, the percentages are similar, only slightly better for Hispanic students, which is a population that is increasing rapidly. In algebra, this is across the board in algebra. We have far too many students of any racial demographics in this school district that are not prepared to take algebra I, which I'm told by the academic folks is a gateway to high school and into college and into success in life. And then, college and career readiness. We have to be able to make sure that if a kid spends 13 years here, that it's not going to be like when I was doing at Lebanon graduation ceremonies last June, where I asked myself every time students walked across the stage and I shook their hands, are these kids prepared for life after high school? And I knew in many cases, the answer was yes, and I knew in many cases, the answer was no. The reason why I know it's no in so many cases is because, again, with African-American kids, based on the state indicators of college and career readiness, six out of 10 of African-American graduates, year before last, were not prepared based on the state indicators. So, the goals then represent the vision of the community, the vision of the community. And then, in addition to the three goals, we have five guardrails, and I'm not going to go through all, I'm not going to go through the details of any of them. Each goal has two or three sub-goals, interim goals, and then the guardrails, the same thing, two or three interms. A guardrails represent, so the goals represent the vision of the community. The guardrails represent the values of the community. Now, I'll give an example here. Guardrail one says, "The superintendent shall not allow students to graduate without the soft skills and financial literacy proficiency needed for post-secondary success." So, when we went out to the communities last year to develop the goals, we got from the business community that students coming out of our system, going into the workforce, need to have a set of soft skills that will allow them to be effective in the workforce. The idea of financial literacy came from students during that same process. Students told us that they wanted to be prepared when they graduated, be able to be financially able to engage with their finances. So, again, the goals represent the vision and the guardrails, the values. Next slide, please. Actually, before, let's go back for a second, go back for a second. So, I'm going to go back to the goals for a minute. And so, each goal, each guardrail, all the interim stuff associated with them, I have a set of strategies that staff has been working for, I think, spring of last year, developing these strategies. I'm not going to go through the strategies here. The board monitoring process is the place to review those strategies, but you've heard one tonight. You've heard the EO curriculum being one. You've heard me and staff talk about early childhood education expansion. In January, the board voted to fund $3.6 million worth of training for our kindergarten through third-grade teachers on the science of reading, in this case, letters. And by the way, that's aligned with state superintendent Ellen Weaver's, one of her top three priorities, the science of reading. So, those are examples of some of the strategies. We have some detailed work going on from the academic staff on how they go into the classroom and make sure that there's high expectation for all students. And so, you'll see those things under this goal, under this monitoring process. Next slide, please. So, the student outcome goals monitoring process, it's, I mean, it's a lot of words on here, but it's a pretty simple concept. We have a set of goals. We have a set of strategies to work towards meeting those goals. So, the monitoring process is essentially an evaluation, the board's evaluation of the superintendent and the superintendent's staff as to whether or not they're making progress towards those goals. So, in fact, the first one says that progress monitoring is a conversation between the school board and superintendent that provides the board the opportunity to evaluate the alignment between student outcome goals and the students, the school district's reality, that reality being the current student performance growth. So, you see the line graph, and you know what the goal is. You know there's a gap between the goal and what the current reality is. And so, the next item on here, number two, "While student outcome goals and current student performance may not match perfectly," and they do not match, it's very imperfect, in fact, "it only becomes problematic when there's no evidence of student growth and progress." Now, later this evening, there's going to be a presentation that'll be given, I'll talk a little bit about it, but primarily by the academic folks, about showing that we are making progress, and so you'll see some of that progress. Number three, "And even if students are not yet growing and making progress, that's only catastrophic if the superintendent does not have sufficient strategies in place for increasing growth and helping, you know, helping make the progress." And so, we don't have to go back to the line graph, but I would contend that for a number of years, it has been catastrophic. And so, this process then is to make sure that we identify that and make progress to eliminate that problem. And number four, the fundamental concerns of monitoring is to, does reality match the vision? Is there growth towards the vision? Are there strategies in place to make sure that that growth occurs? Next slide, please. So, the next three or four, probably three slides, I'm not going to spend it, three slides, three or four slides, I'm not going to spend much time on, because we're going to cover some of this in the later presentation. But I will point out here, the margin process, we will, staff will bring to the board, specific goals, specific interim goals, and show you exactly what's occurring. This example here shows a sub-goal, an interim goal for literacy, for the reading goal. So, we have a goal of kids reading. There's an interim goal that says that, whatever says here, that the percentage of African-American and Hispanic fifth-grade students reading, excuse me, the percentage of African-American and Hispanic third-grade students meeting a certain growth measure will be X to X. The growth will be X to X. And so, what this graph shows here on the left-hand side, it shows for our racial demographics from the fall of '21 through the winter of 2022, the percentage of kids, biracial group, that were meeting their growth targets. So, in the spring, kids take the state tests, state assessments. They will get their results. These interim steps, interim tests gives us an indication whether or not students are making enough growth to be able to meet the assessments in the spring that the state gives. So, on the left-hand side, it shows from fall of '21, the growth from then to the winter of 2022. Then, on the right-hand side, it shows the growth from this past fall of '22 till this past January, winter of 2023. So, you can see we're making more growth in this time period than the previous time period. Now, the rest of these slides here, the next series of these slides, gives some caveats because it's two different measurements. One is the map, the measure of academic progress that was done year before last, I guess it was last year, and then this year is the new assessment that we're using, a tool which is already. But, again, it's showing tremendous growth, and we will take a look at that later in the presentation. So, ma'am, let's go to the slide that says action steps. So um, Maggie, let's go to um, the slide, slide that says action steps. So action steps is just describes what I, what I talked about. Next slide. Next slide. All right, so you will not be able to read this, it, it's, it's not important for what I'm going to say here, to be able to read it. Um. We have uh, this section here, um, it's a calendar. It is a calendar that says when the board, excuse me, the, the staff would bring to the school board the data that is either showing growth or not showing growth. It's by month, it's by assessment. It's by, excuse me, by, by goal, sub-goal. And it tells you what type of data we're going to bring. It's going to indicate whether we're on track and it talk, it'll talk about the specific strategies that we're using. And there's a set of guided questions that we will provide to the board that would be recommended for you to ask so that we can make sure. One thing that we will ensure is that we will pull the data. Uh, we're going, we're moving towards, not there yet, moving towards two weeks before the board meeting, each board meeting before we do a monitoring. Give that, that data to you all, board. Uh, you have an opportunity to take a look at it, um, ask questions of staff. Again, answers from staff before we come into uh, the meeting for the monitoring, uh, to, for the actual monitoring. So that's the monitoring process. And uh, last slide is uh, actually our questions. Uh, again, it's, it's uh, trying to um, close the, the last piece of this work on student outcome goals. Because if we don't monitor what we're doing, we won't know whether or not we want to be making progress and whether or not the strategies that we have in place are the right strategies. The last slide is the question slide.
Yes, Dr. Kennedy, I have a, a, a serious question for you and, and I would ask any further presentations, when you present them, that you really, when you start talking about MAP and I-Spring Ready, that it gets really confusing because I'd seen earlier versions of this report and I appreciate how you put it. Because in the earlier versions, when you put MAP scores up against I-Spring, they made no sense. And that's a violation of Statistics 101 to compare two sets of scores that are set up totally different. So I would ask that in the future, that when we do presentations like that, that we don't open ourselves up for misinterpretation by trying to say I-Spring scores mean anything with MAPs. Because I think, you know, we're in the unfortunate position right now that we have changed our monitoring score. So we really need to look at some of this, we need time. Do you not agree?
Yeah, I, I agree, so I agree, so that's, that's very fair. And so the intent uh, tonight is not to say, uh, this is the monitoring that we're actually doing, is to describe the process and give an example. So, so, but uh, yes, fair enough.
Um, I would just like to thank um, Dr. Temple was removed from Strategic Education for political reasons. But I just want to thank her for her forty years of experience in putting together this monitoring review calendar. Thank you for your work, Dr. Temple.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy, I do have a quick question about the uh, monitoring process. Is the district still working with the Council of Great City Schools um, on this type of stuff?
Um, so yeah, staff is, so um, that's a good point. Uh, so thi- this is, uh, I'm going to call it complex and, you know, people, I'm going to call this complex work. And um, and because of the complexity, we need to understand, all of us need to understand. And um, you know, there, there's, there's concerns about, about the Council of Great City Schools, but this is a process in that um, I've, I think it's useful for the, for the board, all of the board members to understand the process if we're going to use this as a, as a tool for monitoring the progress of students.
In the course of um, the district working on its go- goals and guards rails, I know many of us in this room and on this board spent time uh, in the community, talking with others about what are, what are, what were we dreaming for our students, what did we really want um, our students to learn? And then, you know, these goals were formulated, which I think are um, reasonable goals and certainly worthy of our attention. I thought that the um, Greater Council of City Schools did a really good job of um, helping us understand and, and work through a process. I'm just wondering if now, uh, because we are members of this group, if they couldn't come back and do some training for the board so that we, you know, stay on track with the goals and um, monitor what's happening. Yeah, well, I'm just making a recommendation, I don't know, do I need to make a motion? I would be glad to make a motion to that effect.
I thi- I think we'll cover it in finance because we had that discussion in finance. He did a full presentation on the Greater City.
Okay, as long as we um, you know, use that as a valuable resource to help us, you know, work through. Because this is, this is critical, really important work. And this is, this is what I think we need to be doing as a board, is focusing on teaching and learning. And we can't do that unless we're really monitoring these goals.
Doily noted, um, Superintendent, do you have any further business under your um, report?
Well, I just, well, well, I just want to react to the last two comments. So, so, so we did cover the Council of Great City Schools uh, in the uh, our finance committee meeting, I think, earlier this month. Um, I explained what the council is, you know, what they do, how um, in all the areas that they support uh, school districts across the country in finance and operations uh, and academics and this work on now, on board governance. Um, so and how much we pay, how much the district pays for that service. That we pay, I think it's four or three ma- four or three millions, geez, four or three, four or three thousand dollars a year, a membership fees, a membership. And then for the work that they, and that's the only thing we pay, except for the uh, board goal development process. We had, did have a separate contract and I don't remember how much that was, twenty thousand dollars, yes, twenty thousand dollars.
I think it was a hundred thousand dollars.
So, so the, the uh, the
In fact, I even think it was higher, but I think we can discuss that in finance, Dr. Kennedy.
So, so what we, so what I showed in finance was the amount that we paid over a three-year period. And so the membership was around four or three thousand dollars per year. And then the work on the, on the uh, on these goals was another twenty thousand. And Ms. Williams is going to check that, check my numbers right now. So, so totally, if the total amount would have exceeded a hundred thousand over three years. Um, and then so, so that, so that's, that's the finance piece. But then in terms of uh, whether the board is going to go through this last part, the training on the monitoring, that is a board decision as, as opposed to, I mean, I see it as a board decision as opposed to uh, coming from a recommendation from the finance people.
And, and so we're still clear, we're still members of the Greater City. I mean, they're still, staff is still using their services.
That's correct.
It's just the contract with the board has expired.
That's correct.
Which we'll cover in finance.
Anything else to add? All right, moving right along, um, we will be moving to the Strategic Education of the meeting uh, with our new Strategic Education Liaison, which I have the utmost faith in, which is why I appointed her. Um, and considering the current circumstances, I believe she is the best one to speak on it. And with that said, um, Trustee Bailey, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, um, just student outcome strategic education academic calendar for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Greetings, trustees, Chair McKinney, Vice Chair Bailey, Committee of the Whole, Chair Watley, and Superintendent Kennedy. I'm here tonight to uh, present the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic calendars, drafts A and B. Before we do that, I'd like to um, present you with a very quick crash course in academic scheduling. So we're governed by Section fifty-nine dash one dash four two five, which indicates that the school term should be a hundred and ninety days, must consist of a minimum of a hundred and eighty days of instruction and cover at least nine calendar months. The opening date per Section fifty-nine dash one dash four two five cannot be before the third Monday in August. Next slide, please. State requirements indicate that the three days must be used for collegial professional development and that the district designates annually at least three days to be used as makeup days. So that means that the makeup days do have to be reflected in the academic calendars. Additionally, state requirements indicate that the instructional day for secondary students must be a minimum of six hours a day or if it's equivalent weekly, excluding lunch. The school day for elementary school students must be at least six hours a day or its equivalent weekly, including lunch. Schools may reduce the length of instructional days to not less than three hours for not more than three days each year. So what that basically means, we can't have any more than three half-days in our calendar. Early release days are governed by the State Department of Education memo. Trustees, you'll find that uh, linked in this, in this presentation, which is attached in board docs for both you and the public. The memo indicates that there's an eighteen-hundred-minute-per-week requirement. And as long as the week contains the equivalent minute, minimum instructional minutes, a school may have more than three partial days. And a partial day is a day for the day is not reduced by three hours. So we may use up to five e-learning days for um, incidents that are unforeseen. So those are your weather incidents, um, unforeseen threats, water main burst, that kind of, that kind of incident. An e-learning day cannot be planned on the calendar. And um, it's a day that would be used for a day that schools would have otherwise had to close. E-learning days are designed to offer more flexibility to avoid the loss of instruction. You'll note that on this calendar draft, the two drafts that we're submitting, e-learning days do not themselves appear on the calendar. The districts are encouraged by the State Department to include a note on the calendar about the use of e-learning. Both drafts do include a note to the public. And the instru- instructional days should not be classified as e-learning unless it is in response to an emergency. Professional development days do not qualify as e-learning days. There are some community considerations, so that was just state requirements. Community considerations that we've heard echoed time and time again in our Charleston community are that teachers would like planning time. Um, six full days, three half-days, and eight early release days are included in both options A and B. Teacher planning time is included at the end of each grading period, which we heard overwhelmingly was a um, request. And there is one day between the semester one and semester two uh, semesters. You'll note that that is a mid-day teacher planning, a mid-week teacher planning week, and that does fall on a Wednesday. Um, another community consideration is that overwhelmingly, in an internal survey, uh, forty-seven point six percent of respondents requested a mid-week start to the school year. Uh, our board has previously requested family data conferences be included. This year, we're going to use election day to do that. And that we have evenly distributed instructional terms. And in both calendars, you'll see that each quarter is forty-five days long. Taking the liberty of comparing our calendar options to neighboring districts, you'll see that uh, CCSB has a, a variation of spring break options in A and B. And that can be compared to our neighboring districts' drafts. Um, it's important to note that these drafts have not yet been approved by the neighboring districts. Option A and option B are attached. You'll note that the main difference is a spring break in March of twenty twenty-four or a spring break in April of twenty twenty-four. Additionally attached in board docs, you'll find a comparison document with detailed information about how the two calendars compare to one another. That's the end of my presentation, uh, this time I'll take questions.
Ms. Denny, um, go back to um, slide eleven. Teacher planning time is included at the end of each grading period. Does this meet that requirement? I know that there's a, a law that came out that we have to meet um, at planning time uh, for teachers exclusive of anything else. Is this the section that meets that requirement? I think we have a deadline that we have to meet um, for the state as well.
Yes, ma'am, I know Ms. Simmons is leading the work on um, unencumbered instructional planning time for elementary schools, so I'll let her speak to that.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Denny, that, that does not include this general cap, uh, calendar, but it is being considered in collaboration with Ms. Paylor's office and the elementary learning community. And so we are addressing that so that we meet that deadline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to make a motion to um, move this calendar?
Yeah. Need to make a motion to move the calendar for the um, the families to be able to, to vote on which one that we will approve. Yes. I need a sec.
I'll second it.
My apologies to you, Trustee Bailey, for not catching you up to speed that you'd be running this portion of the meeting and how to conduct it. We'll take care of that from here forward.
Uh, just to, before we, we vote, um, I, I did want to uh, reference Ms. Huggins. We had discussed the um, I guess proprietary or the, the, if it was proper for the committee of the whole to take action to approve the district's new items. I had raised the question and, and I think you said you were going to discuss it with staff and get back to us on that.
Yes, yes, sir. Um, it's not appropriate for the committee to take action, but to take a vote on whether to move this to the next board meeting. You're right, to take action there. So, so your motion, if you're right, Mr. Kelly, would, would, would be um, to make a motion, if you so choose, if it's the will of the board to move these four action to the, to the board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Catch.
Policy nerd.
Does the motion need to be amended?
Well, I can't amend the motion, but uh, the, the, all I was pointing out uh, was that the committee of the whole doesn't have the authority to direct the district to do anything. So it would be improper for us to vote to ask the district to make these public or to ask the district to do anything in this form. So I would suggest, uh, Ms. Bailey, if you'd accept a friendly amendment, I would suggest that we amend the motion to put this on a consent agenda item for the board meeting upcoming so that we can, in fact, direct the district uh, to, to publish this.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, but the, this is a very, I'm being nitpicky here and I apologize for being a policy nerd.
Well, everybody's being nitpicky tonight, so let's go for it.
Okay. So, so we don't have, as committee of the whole, the authority to tell the district to put these options up for public vote. What we do have the authority to do is to ask, uh, to move this to the board agenda so that the board can then direct the district to put it up to public vote.
Yes, I approve that amendment.
So the, the amendment was accepted by Ms. Bailey?
Yeah.
We, we will need to change the dates in the motion.
For the survey.
Likely would.
Yeah.
The, the motion, the, wow. The amendment is to put this item on the board meeting agenda rather than approve it tonight. So we don't need dates in there at all, that's something we should have decided board. But again, it's your motion.
Mr. Gravowski, do you have something to say?
I, I thought we were on our time limit on this, that this was something that was almost critical on approval. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir, there is a timeline for this, but a week, a, a week would be sufficient.
Okay.
Thank you for asking for clarification.
So this would go up for approval next week.
Yes, ma'am. If your motion's approved, the board would consider it for action next week, move to, for public input, and then come back to the board. Yes, ma'am.
Is this enough time for public comment? We have these dates, the twenty second today is the twenty first. These dates would have worked as we had met last week for the agenda. So I think, I think the community will need a little bit more time to respond here.
Agreed. Dr. Temple, I was, I was suggesting we shouldn't include any dates at all tonight. And that those dates could be discussed or should likely be discussed at, at board meeting where we have the authority to direct the district. But I, I'm open to something else. That was just my suggestion. Just trying to keep us in line with policy. Thank you. So are we going to get it switched on here?
Yes.
And Ms. Huggins, what is it that you think would be proper for as far as the timeline?
Mrs. Denny, in regards to the timeline, what recommendations would you make for the board? I don't want to overstep. Yes, sir. Last year, I can tell you, I'm looking at our historical motion. Last year, it was approved on February the twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. So having it moved to the meeting next week for action would be in line with last year's timeline. I haven't looked further than last year.
And I, I think even if we had had the committee of the whole meeting last week, the timeline would have been.
We, it would have, yes.
That's right. That's right. The dates may have been a problem in here, but the board still would not have taken action until the twenty seventh.
Correct.
But the timeline for the parents to be able to give way in would have been two weeks as opposed to one.
It would have been.
No, no, no. She'll take that away and a new one will come. She's still working on it. She's still working on it.
Yeah. Ms. Denny, while we're waiting for the amendment to be written up, I know I had a few parents come to me asking about making the calendar earlier, like a one or two years in advance.
I'll work on that next.
I'll ask them like, what, what would it take for us to be able to start approving a calendar one, two, three years in advance? I know we don't know what's going to happen next year, but you know, what can we do to start moving that forward?
So I think that that would be at the board's discretion, how far in advance they'd like to approve the calendars. And, and I can certainly work on that if that's the board's will.
Cool.
And Ms. Denny, I do have one other question. When you reference neighboring communities, is it just Berkeley and Dorchester? Because I had someone in Collington County who wanted to mirror their calendar with our spring break.
Yes, ma'am. I only, I only conferred with Berkeley and Dorchester.
A second.
Colin's second. Mr. Calvin's second. Carl automated motion, amendment and Darren's second. I'm so sorry. But the wording is right.
That, I, I will say if we were to change anything like that, we can go and make, make a motion adjusted. But just have something in case.
You catch that, Carl?
Yeah.
While we wait, I would just like to use the point of privilege. This is a board of trustees meeting and not student government. And the chair's anecdotal comments are not necessary. And I just want to go on record by saying it is unnecessary for anecdotal comments. This is board of trustees.
The screen's not going to change, but the vote did carry unanimously.
Okay.
So Mrs. Bailey, I think we, that since that motion carries nine to O and could be moved for consideration to consent, I think we can move on to the next item, which was an item brought forward by Dr. Temple for consideration. Dr. Temple?
Uh, yes. This is an item I brought forward. We have had, uh, an interest in many issues related to the school district. And the thought here was that if each board member would identify a set of interests that we could then schedule a time to have a presentation about that particular topic and begin to understand a little bit more in depth what's happening. I like to use the excuse or use the example that I've had people say, well, in career and technology, we're only teaching kids to work in fast food. Well, that's not really true. We have some tremendous opportunities and programs available for our students through the career and technology centers. So I think it would be great for us to have presentations like that so that we know more about the wonderful things that are going on in our school district. So this was a intentional item to ask board members to list items that they were interested in and then prioritize it so that we could then discuss those topics for information in the strategic education part of our agenda.
So do we need to make a motion to set that in place?
I guess we need to move, move, motion to move that we create a Google survey for board members to pri- prioritize topics for discussion and add two to three additional topics of their own interest to guide the educational discussions and decisions at committee of the whole meetings and or at a board ret- retreat.
Second.
Well, we don't take action in committee of the whole. So, so if I might interject here and pardon me for being out of order, if so, Madam Chair, call me out. You might easily amend that to say, I move, I make a motion to move that the board considers the creation of a Google survey, which would just add two or three words, but would allow that consideration for the upcoming trustees meeting next week. Dr. Temple?
I accept it.
You have to make the amendment. You're going to have to amend it.
Would, would it be possible? Because generally, we've actually never taken action in a COW. It always happens at the end of the month. And it's just understood that every action that comes out of this meeting is going to the, the, the main meeting. And that's why it develops a consent agenda. So could we just put a few precursor words as, you know, we don't, if we miss them today, fine. But moving forward, just have those three little preceding words so that we don't have to keep going through.
We are, we are happy, Ms. Waters, if that's the will of the majority of the board to, to support that.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
And I would just ask that before you come out of cabinet, that these things are reviewed for correctness.
So Dr. Temple, would you like to make an amendment to the motion that's on the floor?
Yes, let us move this item to the board meeting on the twenty seventh.
For consent. For consent.
For consent.
Did you get a second?
Already seconded.
Did you get Mr. Calhoun's second?
Okay, the motion carries.
Uh, so Ms. Bailey, the next item is similar to the, uh, the previous one in that. Yeah, Dr. Temple brought this forward.
Try to get those words right. Are you ready for me to address this item?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, this item is to understand student testing. We are using a lot of different kinds of instruments to test achievement and accomplishments of our students for various goals. And so this, the intent of this is to have a presentation at our COW meeting so that we as board members do understand the various kinds of instruments that will be used to monitor the goals. So.
Can I just make one suggestion? Could we have maybe some workshops outside of the meetings just because these meetings are running so long? Would you entertain even, even for the, you know, for the prior? Maybe if we could have some of these presentations in our Zoom meetings or something dispersed so that we're not adding so much to it. But I, I totally support hearing it. Just don't want all the, too many presentations to happen on board meeting days.
I mean, I think that's a great idea for the board to have opportunities to learn more about what is happening that affects the teaching and learning of our students. So I'm definitely open, if not only at our meetings, but also in workshops that we can find mutually agreeable dates to attend. All right, so let me, um, make a motion to move this item forward to, for the consent agenda for the two twenty seven board meeting and include that we could have these presentations both at the COW and or the COW meeting or in workshops.
A second. At the risk of irritating you, we're, carry on. I'm not going to, for, just to, to help us all out. The wording is really important from Robert's rules. The motion you just made is to add it to consent, which means if it doesn't pass, the entire item's not even on board of trustees meeting, which I know is not what you actually want. So might I suggest that next time we don't make the motion to add it to a consent item, but just add it to the board of trustees agenda?
Yeah.
So I, I want to support what you're trying to do. I, I think.
I think it's good. And if we can come up with the, the proper words to start the, the recommended action, I think that would be really helpful.
So, so, so staff will work on that. Just, just for a historical perspective. So in, in, in the prior meetings going back years, on the committee of the whole, there's a motion. The board votes on the motion. If it's unanimous, then it goes to consent. If it's not unanimous, it goes for the next board meeting for discussion. And so what we will modify the wording to say, put it into the, carry it over to the, uh, to the upcoming school board meeting.
I would suggest you remove the word consent, but it's Dr. Temple's motion.
I accept it.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, our next item up is the District One student progress at Wando. And Ms. Huggins will have this presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. At the, at the request of several board members, we have Pamela Jabar, who is the associate principal at Wando High School, who's with us via Zoom this evening to share with you progress of students at Wando who are zoned for District One. Many of you may know of Ms. Jabar from her time at Lincoln High School as the principal. So I'm going to thank Mrs. Jabar for being with us this evening and turn it over to her. Thank you, Ms. Jabar.
Thank you, Ms. Huggins.
Mrs. Jabar, if you can hear me, it looks like we're having some technical difficulties perhaps.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Brilliantly. We sure can.
Okay, what I'm going to do.
Go ahead and get started. We have the, your slides up on the screen for our trustees members to see.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Mrs. Huggins. Good evening, trustee members, Chair Watley and Superintendent Kennedy. I will be sharing a brief update pertaining to the students zoned for District One. the students' zone for District One progress here at Wando High School. And because I can see that I'm having spot, my picture is spotty, I'm going to stop my video, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. On the first slide, we're looking at the average scores for students who were attending Lincoln in the year 2015, 2016. And students who lived in District One and attended Wando in the years 2021, 22. The average score for Algebra I in 2015, 2016 was seventy-two point nine. And the average score in 21, 22 was seventy-eight. In Biology, it was seventy point one. And in 2021, 22 school year, it was sixty-eight point four. For US History, it was sixty-five point two. And in 2021, 22, it was sixty-seven point nine. There was no exam for our English II reported for 2015, 2016. But for 21, 22, it was seventy-eight point four. Next slide, please. Advanced Placement. Based on college board research, it indicates that ten to twenty percent of students participating in an AP course are more likely to finish college with a degree. And twenty-six to thirty-four percent of students passing an AP course are more likely to finish college with a degree. For our Lincoln students, we had approximately a hundred and eighty students. And in that slide to the floor left, you will see the years for 2012, 13, 14, 15, and 16. The actual number of exams taken and their percentage of passing rate. So when Lincoln closed in 2016, there were only four AP exams taken with a passing rate of twenty-five percent. With the current Wando High School students zoned for Alwindor and McLennanville, this is approximately two hundred and thirty-nine students. There were seventy exams taken with a passing rate of eighty-three point three percent. Next slide, please. ACT. There was an increase in test scores in all subject areas. In the ACT for the math section for Lincoln High graduating seniors in the year 2015, you can see that the percentage was twelve point five. Math was fifteen point two. Reading thirteen point eight. Science fourteen point five with a composite of fourteen point two. And 2016, English was thirteen point two, math fourteen point seven. Reading thirteen point nine. Science thirteen point six with a composite of fourteen. The ACT scores as of December 2022 for seniors who live in District One but was attending Wando, which was nineteen. The English, there was an increase in English of nineteen point six. An increase in math of twenty-one point nine. An increase in reading of twenty-one point seven. And an increase in science of twenty-two. That's with a composite of twenty-one point four. Next slide, please. This slide will show an increase in math achievement for those students taking the SAT. In the year 2015, for our Lincoln High graduating seniors, the average math score was four hundred and five. And 2016, the average math score was three hundred and eighty-nine. As of December 2022, the average math score for SAT was five hundred and twenty-three. This concludes my brief update pertaining to the students zoned for District One but attending Wando High School. Are there any questions at this time?
Yes. And Ms. Jabbar, Darren Calhoun here. I guess one of my biggest questions was, in your expertise, why do you believe that there are such disparities between the two schools? The former Lincoln and now with the students being zoned over at Wando. What, what is that disparity there? Whether the resources being given to Lincoln or what?
Well, there are more, they afforded more resources at Wando at this time. And then you will also, the, in, in, with me giving the percentages, the numbers are different too. The numbers of students was much lower than the numbers of students currently attending Wando. Because I stated in one of the slides, the average students was like one hundred and eighty students for, for Lincoln, where we have two hundred and thirty-nine students at Wando. And again, they are afforded more opportunities at Wando. We have several interventions during the school day for students who may need additional help. And those students are allowed to go for assistance just during the school day, during their elective class. We have, students can receive help through our National Honor Society. And then this year, we have extended our lunchtime where students can receive additional help from their, directly from their teachers during their lunchtime. And they can also remain after school or come in before school and get additional assistance.
Thank you.
Yes?
I'm sorry, I think there might be a delay. I wonder if you wouldn't mind. You talked about the average scores of the students that were moved for rezone from D1 to to Wando. How are they performing in, in relation to their peers? Obviously, there's an increase in the numbers. I don't have a point of reference for is five twenty-three good? Better than the national average? Worse than national average? Doing better or worse than the rest of the Wando students who are zoned for Wando originally from D2?
They are doing better than the students when we closed in 2016 with the average score of thirty-nine. And now, this, let me, point of reference. The number of students we are referring to in 2016 is only nine students. And out of those nine students, their average math scores was three hundred and eighty-nine. The number of students in 2015 with the average scores of four hundred and five was, there were only fifteen students. With the average of five hundred and twenty-three at Wando, now we are looking at fifty-two students. So out of the fifty.
Sorry, carry on, I didn't mean to cut you off.
So out of the fifty-two students who actually, as of December 2022, who took the SAT, only fifty-two students, their average scores was five hundred and twenty-three. So we're not comparing the same numbers of students. There are more students now who are attending Wando than they were at Lincoln. Did I kinda, did I answer your question?
Well, it, it brought up some other questions.
Okay.
But, but perhaps this isn't the, the proper time. What I'm trying to understand, Mrs. Jabbar, is it, if we actually have better student outcomes at Wando than we did at Lincoln? Or if we have, and I don't mean intentionally, but if we have muddied the, kind of cooked the numbers a little bit with a bell curve here, rather than, rather than actually improved the, the lot of the students who are, who are making the trek down to Wando. And I don't, I don't mean to insinuate that was on purpose. I'm just, as Mr. Gabowski talked about earlier, you know, statistics, when you compare two things that aren't the same, it, it really makes it difficult to to draw a conclusion from the data.
If I may interject, Mrs. Jabbar, this is Anita. Mr. Kelly, I appreciate you bringing that up. Currently, as Ms., I've heard Mrs. Jabbar give this presentation before. She sometimes starts with, these students are now Wando warriors. So it's hard for us, you're, 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 you're correct. It, it, but it's hard for us to determine which of the two hundred and fifty-six students done for this analysis would have attended Lincoln if Lincoln was still open. So the only way we have to report to the District One Board and to you, any sort of comparative analyses is to look at students who are zoned for District One, our McCollumville and Alwindor areas, and compare it to the students that actually attended Lincoln when it was open, which it was closed back, I think, in 2016. So our intent is not to purposely look as though we've inflated or positioned students better on the bell-shaped curve. Is for the point of reference, we, we, we've done our best to adequately represent based on what we, what information we have. Does that make sense or clarify some of the concern?
It does, it does. Thank you. And the root of my question, just so that we're clear, is I've heard from a lot of D1 constituents who frankly want either Lincoln High School reopened or another building built there. And so I'm trying to understand when I go to speak with them, if in fact their students are, are doing better than they hypothetically might be at one, at Lincoln if it were to still be open. Or if, if this is just purely a numbers matter, would it be possible for the, for the district to bring forward the actual numbers instead of averages? Sanitize without, you know, identifying, but you know, this many students.
We could, we could certainly, Mr. Kelly, and I appreciate the desire to clarify so that you can be responsive to constituents. We could certainly share with you the, the raw data if that's, if that's desired. But inevitably, for the purpose of this analysis, we're comparing averages to averages. So we were comparing apples to apples. The test group, though, is, is a bit different because we we don't actually know of the two hundred and fifty-six odd students or, for the purpose of this study would have actually attended, what percentage of those students would have actually attended Lincoln if it was still open? So we could provide that raw data, in so much as we still have data from 2015, 16. But the, for the purposes of this, we tried to compare apples to apples in regards to the averages, if that makes sense.
Understood, yeah.
But thank you for seeking clarification in your attempts to understand, as you think forward, all of you, about options for students in District One.
Thank you, Ms. Huggins.
No, ma'am, Ms. Jabbar, we appreciate you. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Do you have any more questions for Mrs. Jabbar? Well, Ms. Jabbar, we appreciate your continued service at Wando for all the students, and particularly for the students you continue to serve in District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Huggins. Have a good night.
Yes, ma'am, you too.
Okay. And the last item was African-American Studies course. We amended the agenda because our speaker is not here tonight. So we go into six policies.
I'm gonna be delayed. My, my computer got shut down. Give me one second, let me sign back in.
Mrs. Watley, would you mind if I get started with policies while you?
Go for it, yes, yes.
Thank you. So JKA was brought to the, to me as a policy liaison a couple of weeks ago. It, well, actually, originally probably a month or more ago. This was something that was originally taken up by the district, by the board. I couldn't tell you when. Oh, it says right there, October of 2022. So it was before we were, this board, with the exception of Ms. Waters, was, was here. And essentially, it is amending the contact restraint and intentional physical so, I'm sorry, seclusion contact and intentional physical restraint. I worked with the, with the legal team a bit, but for the most part, this is as it was. I did think it was proper to bring it to COW so that we could have discussion rather than directly to the Board of Trustees' meeting, which is what would have been customary, simply because it had been modified so much between the time the first, the board previous to us voted and approved it. And, and now. So all the items in red are what have been added since, since then. And the only, only change that I made or asked the district to make was to make a carve-out for medical or physical threat. So I didn't want a policy that said, you know, a teacher that is duly certified in CPR can't give a kid CPR else they're, you know, breaking the law or a policy. As well as if a child has a weapon, a teacher, if they so choose, are permitted to intervene physically to remove the weapon or the threat. Yeah.
I have a question. For Mr. Kelly and Ms. Payler, I noticed I was reading through that policy, and I noticed a number of times the word imminent was stricken. Can you speak to that? Because I, I understand legally what that means. Especially in a situation where use of force is what we're talking about.
And I was not the person who was involved with Mr. Kelly on this one. I had my special ed lawyer doing it. But imminent, I think is a stronger word, so I think they took it out here. Because if a student's behavior poses danger of physical harm, it might not be an imminent danger, but they're on notice that.
It's got people's alert system going.
Yeah.
We, we, we did take a look at that because we thought any danger needed adult attention and intervention. And so that's why we eliminated imminent and serious.
Thank you, because I, I agree with you on that one. Yeah, all right.
There were subjective terms.
Okay. That was the only thing that, that raised a flag for me, so thank you.
I also asked, because I didn't understand, and I, perhaps others may not as well, the, the seclusion policy does not take away from the principal's ability to use in-school suspension as a corrective mechanism. I wanted to be, ensure that we weren't limiting ways that principals can help correct behavior before it becomes a bigger problem, so that, that was intentionally or cautiously worded to allow for in-school suspension rooms to still be used.
And I'm glad you pointed that out, because that was the other thing that raised a flag for me. It, it, as I read it and read the legal definition, as was defined by this policy of what seclusion was, I would not be in favor of solitary confinement as what they do in prison for a child. Because I understand the psychological implications that happen when you're placed in psychol, or in solitary confinement. So as I read through it, I became a little bit more comfortable with, with that and the wording and, and striking the use of that. I would definitely not be in favor of it.
That was our intention.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to move policy JKA to the board meeting this month for a second, a formal second reading and a vote for adoption.
I second that. Dear, are you having a problem, Mr. Paul? All right, the window is up. Please check and see if your vote is represented correctly. If not, we'll move on to audit and finance where I will turn it over to Mr. Grabowski. Did you have something? Sure. No. Okay. Mr. Grabowski?
Great. I wish everybody stuck around for all this tantalizing information I'm going to give as to how we're going to pay for all this stuff that we're discussing right now. Staff has done a wonderful job and what I'm going to try to do in the next five minutes, I hope, is to put this all down into a third grade level so we can try to understand what's going to be happening at the school board meeting. I've asked the staff to do a full presentation at the school board meeting, but what I'm going to try to do is give you some of the things that the committee and I looked at when staff gave us the presentation of things that you should be thinking about and trying to understand and reviewing this so that when we have questions to ask before we take any actions on some of these parts that you're well informed. First of all, we're going to be making some very serious votes on some big numbers. If anybody was going to tell me I was going to be talking about numbers of $600 million and a billion dollars and then having to take a vote that's obligating us to paying these back, it's nuts, it's crazy. But we have two bonds that are be coming up. One is the 2023 bond anticipation note, which has to be issued, if I'm correct, on March 1st. So it's going to be, we have an awful lot of well-qualified people, a lot smarter than me, that are working on this, getting the bonds ready. But just so that you understand some of this, this is like having a house and a credit card. Basically, the house is all these long-term mortgages that have been entered into for many years to build all these wonderful schools. And then there's this operating thing so that we can go eat. And then we've got this nice little line of credit that we have to issue because it all depends on how we receive our money. And I think there is a real misconception by a lot of people as to where all the money comes from to pay for our education. On, on the short-term anticipation notes that we're going to be issuing, that's to cover the general fund shortfall right now. And the money that comes in is from your car, the tax on your cars, your boats, your planes, business taxes on second homes and other businesses. And it's, it's not your personal homes. You've got an exemption on that. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, step in right away.
Yes.
If I'm talking too quickly.
No, no, you're, you're great. It's, it's the millage. We have a millage that is for capital. I'm sorry, for debt.
True, but the millage is not personal. All you people out here that own homes.
It is. So there's two millage.
Two millages.
Two millages that the, the school district receives revenue based on. The operating millage, you are correct. We do not, it's not for owner occupied homes. However, we do have a debt, a debt service millage, which we use as a source of revenue for these types of deals.
For the long term. And then we have the bond anticipation notes, which will be issued in about May. And that funds all our capital projects from the prior years and to make payments on some of the maturity dates.
Correct. Outstanding debt cash flow, as well as our capital projects and fixed cost of ownership.
And I'll give you an example why, when we have to start thinking about this, why we should be concerned. A lot of building went on as a result of a short-term collection of where these bonds were funded by sales tax. And that ends in 2028.
Yes, you're correct that the, the current sales tax program that started on June, I mean, January 1st of this year, it's the third six-year sales tax program and that goes through 2028. And what we do with that is the voters in 2020 approved a list of schools to be funded from that particular sales tax. And over the course of the next six years, those schools will be built or renovated or whatever type work is being done on them. But the money from the sales tax will come in kind of more or less relatively level over the next six years. But the curve for the construction, you know, will ramp up. It'll be sort of a bell curve. And so what we do with the Series B bond anticipation note, that's basically cash flow funding for the building program for the sales tax. And that money is never going to be paid back by any property taxes on people's homes or, or property taxes on anything. That's strictly from the sales tax.
And this is why I bring it up to my fellow board members. And I really want you to think about that, what she just said. The consistency of the sales tax, God forbid we have a recession and what she just said is not true. It's going on historical data. So we are basing everything right now on historical data and not entering into any recession. So when we look at further purchases, any bond payments, any bond requests that they may be asked, you've got to take that into consideration when you start looking at these big numbers that have basically been coming on year for year.
Mr. Grabowski, just one additional thing to add. So when we do these bond compositions, we do look at future projected revenues. We look at incoming revenues, projected sales tax. So we're not just purely relying off of historical data, but we are projecting out and working with our friends at the county to help to understand what the projected revenue looks like as well.
If not on historic data, what are your projections based on?
So Jay is from PFM. They're our financial firm that we use during these deals. He is on Zoom. Jay, if you want to talk a little bit about the analysis that we do.
Yeah. So just a minute, Jay. So Mr. Grabowski is correct. This is very complex. We're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars in debt that the district has. There's a strong plan on how we manage that. So what we are prepared to do tonight, since the board has to vote on this on Monday, this coming Monday, and the board needs to understand. So we are prepared, the lady that was speaking just a minute ago to the left of Ms. Williams is Ms. Carol Clark. She's our bond attorney. She understands the complexities of the bonds. She's prepared to make a presentation in conjunction with our financial advisors, PFM, which is Jay Glover's on the line, so that you can understand tonight what we, what you're going to be voting on, on Monday. So we can do the presentation now, if that's okay, so that y'all can understand. And then, and then on Monday, if you have, have additional questions.
Really? And, and in all seriousness, the committee was, is not getting in their way. These bonds have to be issued. I mean, that's just the end of the story. What I'm trying to raise right now is I'm trying to raise the concern that we should be as we go forward and we start thinking about expenditures, we start thinking not so much about, you know, budgets, but it's really going forward because I'm going to, you know, according to staff, by the year, if we are successful, we don't borrow too much money. By the year 2032, we should have all of our outstanding debt paid off. So it's a pretty amazing thing, but that's the caveat is if we aren't out here building a lot more new schools. And the other caveat you've got to look into is that you will see in these papers, and mind you, this is just one meeting of documents that these poor people have to look at, that, you know, they send me to look at with all these numbers. There are things that are being adjusted and you will see it on your fixed cost report that comes out. They have itemized a lot of the projects that are going to need more money or are on budget. So just because we have borrowed this money, we aren't on budget because we have cost escalations. Prices have gone up, so it's, these are anticipated and they've done a very good job in trying to keep these numbers down and as close to what the bonds were originally issued for. So I just ask you, you really start looking at some of this because when you see the fixed cost of ownership that we see every month, that is being itemized right now for the next 20, I mean, next 12 months. So when you look at that on their reports laid out, you will be seeing approval because the amounts are in 250,000 and more, which comes into our purvey. So they're showing you the line item, you know, to go back, look at the report. And so when you see this fixed cost report every month, that's where these numbers are coming from. So they've already looked at it and they've done a very good job laying it out. Another key thing that we looked at, at the fixed cost was the large number of money that the district anticipates spending on software because it's over $12 million. What we have to realize when you look at that number, that one-third of that amount is mandated by the state. One-third of it is operational and one-third of that is curriculum. So when you really look at curriculum amounts of money and the size of our district, it's really not that much. So don't think that all of that software is something that is going straight towards the education. A lot of it goes to the operation and a lot of it's mandated by state. Esser Funds, we have to, this is going to drive me nuts and I'm going to keep coming back and back and back for that because, you know, we will talk about this on EL. I mean, EL was funded by Esser Funds. Great idea. Do an innovative project. You know that it's, you know, you need a couple of years of data to see if it really works. That's fine. But we're going to have some interesting discussions when we talk about mandating a curriculum that doesn't fall under the guidelines of a sustainable idea. Because somewhere we're going to have to come up with money to continue that type of a program. And I'm just using that as an example because the original, you know, idea with EL was to get it into the acceleration schools, you know, get it, as you've heard, you know, they, they're talking highly for it and you need the data, you need to give it time to work and everything, and it was funded. But I think now we're looking at spending almost $10 million, if I'm not correct.
On curriculum?
On using Esser Funds, $10 million on EL.
So, so we do have a budget line item for curriculum in Esser. Esser was, is a one-time source of funds.
Correct, one time.
Correct. So the district created a sustainability fund using fund balance to absorb the men, the, the programs that we are going to keep once Esser sunsets. These are conversations that we've had for the past 12 months.
See, so that's a great answer. So that shows because if you, we just came back from a conference with all my colleagues down there, talking to fellow board members. And one of the biggest issues coming out was, is there are some serious changes in funding that we'll be receiving. So I want you to think about this as we go forward. I'll give you an example. EIA, as I understand EIA now, we're going to have to match 25% of what we get. So if we're collecting $35 million currently, it used to be dollar for dollar for dollar for dollar. Now we've got to find 25% of our money to get EIA money. State, the state has changed their whole model of how we get our money.
We did, and we reviewed that, the district reviewed that last year with the board during the legislative session. Once the formula changed, the district actually fared positively. We actually got more state allocation with the new funding formula. So the district saw positive gains in revenues based on the new funding formula.
And that's incredible because 40 of the 80 districts did not. In fact, they had a couple of districts, five, that had more students in it and lost money from the state. So we've got to be very, very careful when thinking about what the state's going to be giving us because the legislators, and we're going to have to be watching this, which is why us as board members or trustees have to be on our legislatures to make sure that this staff has the money from the state that we're entitled to. And there are a lot of factors that go into it. One of the factors that they eliminated was this dual enrollment. The state's not funding it anymore. So we've got to look at all these factors and we'll be bringing them forth so that you can see it. And this is going to be something that's going to be, this is why the budget time in the next 30 days, 60 days is so critical that, you know, we all understand it and that we schedule the workshop and that we work with staff. Because staff's done a great job in this and we've got to continue it. But you just can't think that this is going to continue. And I'll give you the letters. The letter program is a perfect example of a program that was funded with Esser Funds. And the sustainability was brought about because teachers were going to be learning this process and they were going to be training extra teachers. So there really wasn't a big and additional extra money that would be need to continue that program. And that's why it's, that is a great use of Esser Funds because it meets all of the requirements. And I'm glad to hear about the reserve for programs such as EL. If you have that money, because that is the biggest problem. We have funded, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of FTEs with Esser Funds.
Yes, we have. So just to add some context, the district was well aware that Esser was one-time funding, just like Race to the Top or any large significant federal appropriation that comes in as a part of a stimulus. So we've had sustainability conversations from the beginning. We are very aware when the grants are sunsetting. We've worked with HR to make sure that our hiring practice align with the parameters of the grant when we hire people on the grant. There, keep in mind, as sir, we didn't hire new people. We offset some general fund costs with the revenues that we received. And so there will be some positions that will move back to the general fund at the sunsetting of Esser. But these are conversations that we're having weekly, if not daily, in my department. And so we do bring that information forward and sustainability is at the top of the list. I don't think anybody in this organization talks more about the funding Esser Cliff than I do. My colleagues are probably sick of it, but it is very real and it's something that we have a pulse on.
And, and that's wonderful news to hear. It's a great plan. But when you talk to other districts, they will tell you they didn't do it. Because one thing you must understand with an FTE, when you fund it, you have an FTE. You have, it's not like they go away. It's not a contract. They are full-time employee. So when you fund them with temporary funding and the temporary funding goes away, then it has to be absorbed by the general budget. But it's good that HR has a plan. I know I've talked to them too. And I feel very confident that their plan's going through. But we always got to remember, there is in this report, a request or a notification that next year we may be receiving a request to borrow an additional $99 million. Okay, now, within, or $90 million, within that request, I've been told by staff that they feel very confident that we can still pay off all our debt if everything holds stable by 2032.
Yes, but I want, I want to just say, we don't just feel confident. It's not, it's not, it's not a feeling. So there, there's really detailed analysis that's been going back 15 years or more since we, since we first went into debt. And so we have our bond attorney has been with us since that time period. PFM, Public Finance Management Firm, they have been with us from day one also. So it is really detailed in terms of the, the revenue that's coming in, in the future. The PFM folks, along with our finance people, are very, very conservative on their projections. And so I own projections on revenue. And so, so conservative that over the years, we've actually come in with more revenue than what was budgeted, even, even during the pandemic years. So, so there's a lot of detailed analysis that have taken place, continues to take place and will continue to take place in the future. And unless, unless we go into more debt, more substantial debt with the 8%, we will be out of debt. The district will be in 2032.
And if I could just synthesize what I think I hear Mr. Grabowski saying is the concern is, and I'd like to hear my question answered if I may, if, if projected revenue is based on something other than historical data, I'm curious. But the, the concern seems to be that we're about to undertake this massive debt with the assumption that we're not a feeling, educated guess, call it whatever is appropriate, that we're going to have the funds to pay it off. So I think the question is appropriately raised. Are those funds going to be there? And do we want to go undertake a $90 million debt?
It, it is an appropriate question. It is very appropriate. And we have tonight the experts to answer the question. We have two experts, our bond attorney and our financial advisor, that they have a presentation to go, to answer those questions for, for the board.
Jay, can you please?
Mr. Kennedy, this is, this is Jay Glover. If I, before we go into the details of the presentation, if I can kind of hit on that one specific question to hopefully give the board some comfort. Is that appropriate?
Jay, it is. Yes, please.
Yes. So we're really talking about two different things and we're talking about financial projections. As was mentioned before, we're talking about assessed value growth, which relates to the millage levy that you collect to service your debt. And we're also talking about sales tax projections, which we use to not only fund your sales tax program on a pay-as-you-go basis, but also pay off these bond anticipation notes that are providing interim financing. On the assessed valuation assumptions, we assume a very conservative, I think, one and a half percent growth rate. in the assessed value and no reassessments. And as you know, there's a reassessment every five years. And I think, you know, Charleston has historically seen much more substantial growth than that on the assessed value. So we, we do think that is very conservative assumption and should not, you know, prohibit your ability to pay that debt off at the appropriate time mentioned. As for sales tax revenues, I don't think it's anybody's, Mr. Anybody that sales taxes have been substantially higher the last couple of years. Really around the country and especially in Charleston County. As such, in our model, we are growing off of a baseline before the substantial growth of the last couple of years. So we're starting at a baseline that is actually below where current projections are, or actually current collections are, and then growing at a much lower percentage, 2%. We also do stress tests that show what a recession might look like in year one, something like a 15% decline for one year, and then growing thereafter. And under all of these models, there's a plenty of cash flow to complete the projects and pay off your debt. I think what the likely scenario is, is that collections continue to come in at a nice clip and we actually have additional revenue that can be allocated to future projects. But that's really what we weigh, is sort of making sure facilities is not spending money too quickly and, and not getting too many projects, but also trying to be realistic with our assumptions. So it is a very detailed model and it does allow us to do stress tests. And I do think we are very conservative in our assumptions on the millage levy for debt service as well as the sales tax projections. We withstood the COVID-19 situation within our model, which had sales tax dramatically affected for a short period of time. And then there was a nice rebound. So we've also had some real-life stress tests that we withstood and had excess revenues to boot. So, you know, happy to address any questions you all might have. But we do think we're conservative in all of the assumptions we make. Because the last thing we want to do is to not have enough revenues to service the debt that's out there. And at the conclusion of the presentation, we do have some information about the rating agencies who come in and take an independent look at the district credit and have substantially, you know, improved your credit ratings over the last several years to where you're one of the highest-rated school districts in the state of South Carolina. So again, we have a more detailed presentation, I think Carol is going to go through and I'm going to help her with. But I did want to address those two specific questions sort of at the outset and address any questions you might have related to that.
And I would like to recommend, just for the convenience of time, the whole purpose of this, I think the presentations are wonderful. I just wanted to get everybody to start thinking about this. So when the presentations are given at the board meeting and we're asked to take an action that we, we can move on. I've raised all the concerns in trying to get everybody to look at, you know, what they should be looking at in the packages. Because the presentations through, that we've been presented are very, very clear. They're just big numbers, that's all. And it, it would be foolish to think that if we want to build a school, it's like building a house. We're going to have to take out a mortgage. I mean, we're not going to have the whatever gazillion dollars Jeff's going to come in and ask us for to build our next school. But he's doing a wonderful job in prioritizing and keeping the expenses and the plans going as to, because we do have problems, we have issues in North Charleston. We've got a lot of old schools that need a lot of work. And, you know, it's just end of story. But they are doing, we were very confident at the presentation. I just wanted to raise issues, I know it's getting late. So I, I would defer that if we had any major presentations that we would wait to the board meetings. Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Unless, unless my fellow board members have some questions and they feel they would like to, to ask. I was just trying to raise some of the issues that we addressed at the committee meetings and we should be thinking about in the forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grabowski. We can move on to the next item, which is going to be other business. And I believe Mr. Kennedy has a presentation.
We skipped.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So there are other agenda items under audit and finance that we did not discuss.
Sorry, I thought he was wrapping up for us.
Oh, no, no, that was just the first item. So there are other items that we need to discuss to be able to push forward to the board meeting. Mr. Grabowski, do you want to cover those items or?
Well, I, I, I. That truly was the anticipation on the fixed cost of ownership. We really had no concerns. I mean, everything was well repent, well-reported as stated. So I would like to move that on to the board, you know, for consideration. And approval of projects over $250,000. Once again, it was very, very clear. And the committee had no questions on, you know, approving that. They were all with, in line with what we were, you know, Mr. Bauer was explaining. So we felt very confident with that. The capital programs, 2328, a long-term debt project. Once again, that was given just for information purposes. The same with the monthly capital project report, which is information purposes. And do you think we need to go through that tonight or can we just do them shortly at the board?
We can cover that at the board.
Fine. And the budget process update information. I think that is important because we're a little behind on that.
We're not behind, so we're actually on schedule with what we've, we've targeted as the anticipated milestones. This is just an abbreviated calendar memo, in the memo that we provided. But we are on target with the budget.
I think we just had the, the board workshops.
That's coming up on the 27th of February.
The 27th, okay. Which I highly recommend everybody attends. And the monthly financials, you can just imagine we're on target. You know, if you just want to give a real brief review.
Absolutely, the revenues are coming in higher than what we have budgeted for, anticipated due to the performance of the local revenues. The expenditure side and, and also revenues from the state. The expenditure side, it's actually anticipated lower because of our vacancies right now. So we are fearing that we will have a surplus at the end of the year and will need less funding from fund balances now.
And the, the only other two items that were discussed, one was the Esser Funds and they're going to provide a different layout to explain it to us better on an itemization. We had a short talk of that, so I'll wait till that's resolved. We did talk about the Greater City Council contract that is, Dr. Kennedy's laid it out very well. It's a membership, staff uses it very well. They explained to us how they use it. And there's an awful lot of data there. There was a contract at one time with the board, it was $100,000, approximately $100,000. It was a three-year contract, but they really didn't start drawing down onto it until last year. So they spent $100,000 in almost a year and a half.
If I may ask.
And I have one more question on that contract. I still haven't gotten the answer as to why it was signed after we were all elected.
So I'll answer that in a second. But I want to be clear on the value of the contract that the board had with the council, not the membership fee that I pay every, every year.
Correct, so the contract with the board was only $20,000 in totality. There was no extension or modification of the contract. That was the entire contract for the board engagement. Outside of that, we have the standard membership fee that hovers around $40,000 a year, just like other member districts. And in addition to that, we've had conference attendees when staff goes to participate in different conferences that the council hosts. And, and that's it.
And, and it was what, the membership seems to be well worth it. I mean, the services that they use. I, I think as, if we discussed it at board a little more as to what the board may need, that's a different story. But I do think the staff, from what I heard, was, from everybody, was finding that it was a good membership to have. It's like the South Carolina School Board Association and all the services they can provide, so.
You want me to address the signing of the contract?
Excuse me? Yeah, I, that was just, it was just a curiosity.
Yeah, so.
I'd like to have a contract that was signed, you know, and services were paid and it just, it was like a late signing.
You're correct. As I briefed the Art and Finance Committee earlier this month, the initial concept of having a contract with the Council of the Great City Schools for the board to do the board student outcome development process, that started in sometime in the year, calendar year 2021.
Yeah, it was July of 2021 when they signed it.
And, and so the, the board at the time elected not to move forward with that work. And they didn't move forward with that work until a year later. And, and then during the transition for the administration, there was, there was not a realization that the original contract had not been signed. And then once, uh, once the council said it was time to pay the invoice after the work had done, then we made a correction on that.
Yeah, there, there's no question that services were provided and we, we paid it, so. It's just, shouldn't anybody ever get a look at that contract? It does look.
With that $20,000.
Yeah, it's right. It's all good.
I do have a question, Mr. Grabowski. I did have an opportunity to go through this in the pages that you recommended. My question is, I'm, I'm guessing that this is everything in its raw form, broken down. How, where could I find, how do they, where, Williams? What line item of lawsuits factored into the debt? How, how do you factor lawsuits?
Lawsuits aren't a part of the debt. They, they're budgeted in, in the general operating fund, but we do not have a, a line item in debt for lawsuits.
So it's, it's going to be a number that we're going to have to set, correct me if I'm wrong, a reserve. And we work at our work, workshops and we'll be talking to legal counselors to what pending litigation's ongoing and what we can anticipate hopefully won't happen.
We, if, we are glad to answer any follow-up questions regarding that line item in the budget.
And what is the workshop scheduled for?
It's February the 27th.
At what time?
It is before the board meeting, I will tell you very quickly. It's scheduled for 12 noon.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Absolutely.
Just to set expect, expectations, my understanding, and Ms. Williams can correct me. But the, the purpose of the first workshop on Monday is to give the new board an overview of the budgeting process. The intent is not to get on Monday into the details of the budget. Of course, we're not at that point in the, in our, in, in the finance team and their analysis, trying to understand revenue, what expenses are for next year. So it's just an overview of the budgeting process so that when we get to the details, you'll have that background.
Correct, and foundational knowledge.
Will that, one, will that, um, will that be recorded so that we can watch it at a later date for those of us that are at work?
Sure, it can be. We, we've never discussed it, but if that's the desire of the board, we can.
That would be.
Absolutely.
Nice, and then what time?
12 noon is slated for the February 27th date.
Yeah, so let, let's, let's confirm that. I think it's closer to the board, school board meeting. And I think it's probably, I think we would think like 3 o'clock.
I have calendar hold for 12, but I'll confirm what the actual time is.
Are there any other questions? Okay, with that, we will move on to eight other business. And the item, a CCSD literacy overview, ELA textbook curricular adoption process. And Mr., you have a presentation to share with us?
So this presentation is going to be done primarily by the academic department, I think led by Ms. Huggins, is that right? And Ms. Simmons. I do have maybe two or three slides at the beginning, if we bring the PowerPoint up. And since I talked pretty extensively about the data in my earlier presentation, I won't, I think some of the same slides in here, so I won't obviously go through those again. So the next slide, please. So the next slide, please, I've covered that, I've covered that. Now, hold on a second here. So this slide is just another way to look at the data that I talk about with readings on the, and this is a bar graph that shows actually the reading gap. So on the, on the, the red bar shows that for last year, the percentage of white students who were reading on grade level, based on state tests, was 71%. To the right, the blue bar shows that African-American, that number was 23.1%, a 54% gap. And a similar type gap for, in the middle with the Hispanic students. So, um, so that's what, that's the, that's the work to, to, to work, work through that. Next slide, please. That, that's, that just shows the on average for last, for going back to 2006. On average, we've had eight, eight out of 10 of our African-American students in fifth grade going into middle schools, into middle schools, the secondary schools, reading below grade level. Next slide, please. So you've seen this slide. I don't think I would point out again is that on the left-hand side from 2006 to 2012, we were making progress. And the next slide, and my last slide, it shows that the yellow bar at the top, had we maintained the same rate of growth from 2012 until now as we were making from 2006 to 2012 for African-American kids, we would be almost at the goal that we have African-American kids now. Instead, the blue line shows what the actuals were. So that's the, that's the lost opportunity that we're trying to recapture. So I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Huggins.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Board, Board of Trustees, we appreciate the opportunity to, to continue to talk to you about EL. I want to be really clear with you upfront that our goal here, Mrs. Watley, yes.
I, I would like to ask you a question before you get into this. While I'm looking at the last graph. Because there is a very important trend that I see here. Beginning in 2010 through 2012, actually you could really start, look, I guess, 2009. So from 2009 until 2012, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was Superintendent McGinley that was serving during that time. And she had a literacy task force that had three basic objectives in that task force. And then wasn't it shortly after that, 2014? When was that task force dissolved? I know Superintendent McGinley left in, I think, 2014. When was that task force dissolved?
So, Mrs. Watley, I appreciate that question. I was around when Dr. McGinley served as superintendent, so I'm going to do my best to answer that question. Dr. McGinley put in place a literacy division, which Mr. Kennedy has similarly done. And part of the work that she tasked that division with was elevating the achievement of all students and closing the achievement gap. In Nancy McGinley's tenure, she continued what Mr. Kennedy referred to earlier, that which was started by Superintendent Maria Goodlow Johnson prior to her, which was the coherent curriculum. Around the transition and when we see the decline of student achievement was when the state changed direction and we lost the coherent curriculum. The literacy department at the time, however, recommended various interventions as a way to support students, particularly in the first grade, first grade academy and primary grades academy, that we were, we saw some incremental gains of students. After the dissolution of some of those initiatives and the absence of that curriculum. Ms. Simmons, I know you served as a principal during that time, so please jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. It's when we began to see the decline of student achievement. I hope that helps.
Right, so I have three breakdown. The first intervention was to strengthen the core curriculum. The State Department had a textbook and adoption, and we had two in our district.
Literacy by Design and Journeys, yes ma'am.
And then the second was intervention in first grade academy at the end of year testing. As well as, it had a formula that we use general funds to tutor the kids, to get to those kids that were behind, get them caught up and ready to advance. Identified research-based interventions that work according to national research, small list of approved, and, and teachers trained in these interventions. And then the third prong was a summer program for students that needed a little extra help. Five big things, they, they taught phonics awareness, visual and auditory recognition, phonics sounded out, comprehension, vocabulary and fluency. Those had us going in the right direction.
You're, you're, you're right. We saw significant gains of student achievement when we had, the first thing you said was a core curriculum. When we had targeted interventions and we continued with summer, summer support. The key to what we're going to talk about tonight, and so I appreciate you asking for clarification on this slide though, is developing a core curriculum whereby you don't have to intervene your way out for student success, which at the. which at the time, we were able to, to do and make gains with students. But it's when we saw the absence of that, and going back to what Mr. Kobrowski talked about in regards to financing, being able to scale programs at large. We were not able to do that with some of the programmatic pieces that were in place at the time, like reading recovery. So, Ms. Simmons.
You're accurate. In addition to all of that occurring, we also had changes in our assessment strategy. And so inevitably, when there's a change in core curriculum, a change in your assessment strategy, you will see a regression, you will see lagging data. And that's a part of our presentation tonight on our attempts, our intention, our goals in terms of recovering, rebounding and recouping the learning loss that we experienced, particularly during COVID.
But if, as I look at this one slide that shows the percentage of students reading on grade level, I look at 21 to 2022, and I start seeing all the scores are going up. They started to go up. So, and I look at your presentation and I look at your data, you're comparing MAP testing with other data next side by side. You know, that once again, that's a failure statistics 101, as you go further in and start looking at the presentation. And I forewarned, I gave you a forewarning on that, that if you're going to go in and start showing me numbers, we need time. We really need time. I mean, I understand what you're arguing for EL, but showing this data makes no sense.
So there, if we have the opportunity to share the presentation, there is a qualifier. So we're at a baseline year. That's just where we are. And so what we have available is MAP data, MAP data from last year and I Ready from this year. But if I get a chance to share, there's also a qualifying slide for illustrative purposes that shares I Ready against I Ready. And we still see progress. We still see forward movement and we still see improvements. And so it's fair, it's, I think, Mr. Kennedy, you guys had that opportunity to qualify that. We do have two assessments at play at this time, but they do a few things that are similar. They are nationally normed. They both measure the same types of reading skills and they both have a very strong link correlation assumption about how our scholars will do at the end of the year in the state assessment. And so for that reason, we wanted to be able to present you with the data.
Because, you know, I've seen numbers that have come out showing, you know, the progress of the district. And it shows percentages between the Title Ones and the Acceleration Schools. And the Acceleration Schools are definitely doing better than the Title One Schools. And I commend that program for showing it. But, you know, when you start to show percentages like four or 5%, you know, of an increase, when you're reading, when our students are reading at 15% at grade level, it's pretty easy to come up a couple of percentages. When we compare that to this district average and you start talking about 85% up to 90, it's pretty tough to go up to that. So when we start talking about all these different things and what these curriculums are all doing and what they're doing, we don't have, you know, this presentation, as I look at it, is a snapshot of today. But you need time and you need data and consistent data before we start saying what's working and what's not working.
Point of order, can, can they give the presentation so we can all see the information?
Mr. Calhoun, actually, I'm chair. I will call.
I'm a member and I said point of order. You actually don't get to call. I can call a point of order as a member.
If I would like, if you'd like to learn how to be a chair, that would be one thing. But please do not try to shut me down when I'm exercising my right as a member.
I will maintain an order. Mr. Calhoun has a question.
Did not have a question. I had a point of order. I want to see the presentation.
Okay, well, we were discussing this, so please continue.
So again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here to share with you information about EL. And we want to be really transparent that we're going to talk very quickly, but thoroughly, so that you can understand how we got where we are. We're going to talk to you about some of the challenges we've had with EL. Our goal tonight is not to, to, for this to be a dog and pony show, but to tell you very transparently what some of the challenges have been from parents and from students, and to review some data with you that we've been able to collect over time, some of which is Ms. Simmons shared, apples to apples, and some of which utilized two different tests, which have very similar properties. And at the end of that, we want to be able to answer any questions you might have about any unintended consequences of related action on your part. So next slide, Maggie, thank you for, for bearing with me as I walk down memory lane here back to 2012. And Superintendent McGinley was in place during this time. But it's important for you as board members to know that this is the last time the state of South Carolina adopted an ELA textbook series. So that's been over 10 years ago. Since then, standards have changed at least three times. You'll see there in 2015 was one of the first when standards were adopted. And over the course of the last 10 to 11 years, as some of you know from your time in the classroom and in the district, standards changed multiple times, which made our work more complex in delivering high quality, rigorous instruction to all students regardless of where they were in our district and in which zip code they live. In 2018, for the first time, we gained district-wide accreditation at the time by Advanced Ed, now known as Cognia. Some of the findings were glaring, again, in complete transparency under Dr. Postawait's leadership here with Advanced Ed. You'll see here in red, we were cited for our work in teaching and learning. Learners number 21 have equitable opportunities to develop skills and achieve the content and learning priorities. Point 25, educators implement a curriculum based on high expectations that prepares learners for next levels. And item 26, the system implements a process to ensure the curriculum is clearly aligned to standards. If Maggie goes back to that prior slide very quickly, in 2012 is when Ms. Watley referred earlier, we did adopt Literacy by Design and Journeys, which I know Ms. Simmons implemented as a principal when she was at Stono Park. Again, we saw gains with students, but there were challenges because we were attempting to implement two different curricula. And we have members of our curriculum team here who could attest to some of the challenges there. Maggie, if we, we progress on to the next slide. We took, some of the leaders in this room took the recommendations from Advanced Ed. And you'll see here that around the beginning of 2020, or 2019, 20 was during when pandemic hit, we convened a task force to come together to make recommendations about what we as a system need to do based on, A, the lack of the state to adopt textbooks uniformly to support teaching and learning, B, lack of student achievement, and three, advanced ed feedback about our system, whereby we ran the risk of failing accreditation when we were up for renewal. And so Maggie, as a result, the next slide here, ELA Task Force was convened that represented school-based folk with instructional coaches. You'll see there Carol Cook, for example, on the left, I think was a school-based coach at the time, maybe at Carolina Park over in Mount Pleasant. And you'll see principals, some of whom you saw speak tonight, like Melissa Brewbaker there, the principal of North Charleston Elementary. We had various, again, instructional coaches serving on that team to represent school-based thinking and thoughts. And then principals, most of whom were very veteran, like Dottie Brown there, the principal at Memmager. So that task force was convened. It met for five months, two to three hours a week, to come together and make recommendations about how to proceed with our work around literacy. Maggie, next slide, please, ma'am. As part of that five, five months of work, that team looked at a plethora of curricula. And Emily Woody, who's here today in, in the, in the room, led that work very heroically. The team dwindled down, the curricula choices to the four you'll see here represented on the screen. Again, our desire tonight is to be very transparent with you about what this team did, the flaws in all the curricula from their perspective, and where they ended up based on feedback that they garnered through the extensive process. I won't read for you line by line due to the lateness of the hour, but there were four areas. And Ms. Simmons, do jump in here if I miss something. EL was reviewed, but in addition to CKLA, Open Court, which the district had represented in some places, and Wit and Wisdom, which is the curriculum that's currently used over at Meeting Street. You'll see over to the right, some of the concerns and the factors that played into the district decision to move forward at the time with EL. CKLA, first of all, did not have a middle school curriculum for grade six through eight. So when we think in K-12 about the importance of student progression, we have to think about vertical articulation and what exists for elementary and middle school teachers to be able to collaborate to support student learning, particularly in high need schools and where students don't look the same. Another concern for CKLA was really the lack of diverse and authentic text. And when I say authentic text, what I mean by that, as a recovering English teacher, is the text for student consumption were all written by the publisher, which greatly differs from what you'll see on the next bullet, EL, which is an open source curriculum. What we mean by that in the educational world is that you can go to EL's website now, and I think many of you have probably been there, as have lots of our parents. And you can, you can retrieve the resources that are available and the curricula. The challenge with EL is it's an extremely heavy lift for people, for adults, for educators. Training is critical to success. And so in the pilot phase of this, Jackie Haynes, exceptional leader here, who leads our acceleration schools, made a priority to ensure that she had supports through leading educators. Again, I want to be very transparent that we contract with a third party who provided professional development support in our acceleration schools because the lift for teachers from whom some of you have heard, we've heard, is extremely heavy. Third, Open Court, again, in the interest of time, no, no sixth or eighth curriculum. It was not highly rated in regards to ed reports. There was a challenge with assessments. And last, there Wit and Wisdom. Again, we're proud of our partners who use a standard curriculum. But they're, from our perspective, books were somewhat dated. There was not a strong phonics program embedded, which we believe to be critical in getting teacher feedback to success of this program. So inevitably, the team selected to move forward with EL, knowing that the professional development was going to be heavy. It was going to be a challenge and that there was going to be a lot of change for teachers. So Maggie, if we go to the next slide, you'll see here that the task force in 2021 ended up recommending EL. And at the time, Mrs. Haynes was working with her schools, her acceleration schools, to implement that standard core across the system. It was right after that, that South Carolina then approved EL as one of the five choices for its primary, its priority, excuse me, Palmetto Literacy Schools. Some of the priority schools that are identified for consistently poor perform, poor performance in regards to literacy. And Maggie, if you throw that next slide up there, you'll see the provisos that govern the Palmetto Literacy Project Schools. And it'll explain here for you the definition of a PLP school, which is one where a third or more of third grade students, and for your knowledge, that's where we start to summatively assess our students with SC Ready. Our, again, scoring do not meet, and do not meet is our lowest level. So the South Carolina Department of Education, important for you to know, had, had provided EL in addition to four other curricula for schools to, to, to assess in determination of what it would use. Now Charleston has a large number of PLP schools, 25. And so the work that Mrs. Woody led and her team, some of the school-based folks and principals led, informed making a consistent choice rather than a district our size, implementing a variety of curricula across, across the system, which would be frustrating and challenging in and of itself. Maggie, next slide, please. To give you a snapshot here, so you understand the timeline. That seems like a really long time if we go walk down memory lane to Dr. McGinley's tenure. But if we look just at EL so that you understand how we did what we did and why we did it the way we did it, eight acceleration schools piloted the modules beginning last school year, August of 2021. And then in January, schools were given the opportunity to, 10 additional schools piloted some of the modules. So over the course of that year, from August of 2021 to June of 2022, 18 of our schools were involved in a pilot. Then last spring, as we began to plan for implementation for the coming year, all schools were given, and when we referenced earlier, the need for that vertical articulation, both elementary and middle, were given the opportunity to implement EL for this school year. It's important to know that 33 schools then signed on. And the district did not anticipate that sort of response. And beginning in August of 2022, 52 out of 61 of our K-8 schools opted to use EL based on their work with principals in EL schools, based on some preliminary student data that we had acquired, and based on the collaboration that they had with their peers. I think what's critical for you to know now, if we go to this next slide, is that currently, all of these schools are implementing some form of EL, whether it be the beginning modules or the modules and the skills block. And you'll hear Ms. Simmons talk about some of our challenges with EL, and she's going to talk about just that, that schools were at different places and, and some folks didn't have as much writing, for example, as others. But those kind of challenges have been rectified as we've added modules and provided additional support. Currently of our elementary schools, there are only six. And I think Ms. Simmons will also review this. Three are Montessori schools, Marie Lassane, Hershey, and our Montessori community over in West Ashley. One is Orange Grove Charter, and then Memmager is using Open Court next door and Ashley River Creative Arts. And so I want to turn it over to Michelle now to talk about professional growth, some of the challenges and some of the data.
For sure. Thank you for the opportunity to share on this, since many are interested. And so I will pick up with what our professional learning, support and development plan looks like for EL, because we understand the importance of building capacity. At the building level, we have prepared and planned for job embedded professional development opportunities for our instructional coaches inside the schoolhouse. And so that's where they have the opportunity to work hand in hand, side by side with our support staff from EL. We've also curated at least six opportunities for site visits with our associates with EL to go into the schools, to visit classrooms, to observe teaching, and to help our, both our administrators and our coaches refine their practices as it relates to the program. We also convene bi-monthly teacher focus groups because we do want to hear the honest, the real experience of the folks on the ground implementing the program. And then finally, we convene quarterly leadership meetings. That's our opportunity to analyze the data, to really drill down on what's working well and where are opportunities for growing, where are those opportunities? Next, we believe, like you, that it's important to synthesize the information we're receiving in the form of feedback. As with any new rollout, I've never met a curriculum rollout that hasn't been challenging. And so EL has not been any different. And so you have legitimately received feedback and concerns as we have. And so we try to capture in essence, the feedback that we've received from a segment of our larger community and from some of our staff. In essence, we've heard themes around the content being too diverse or the idea that we may be trying to indoctrinate students with certain ideals or ideas. And our position, our response to that is the curriculum, the content, the material is diverse. We're trying to mimic, we're trying to provide scholars with um opportunities as we have in our schools, as we have in our community and what they will encounter in the world. So yes, the the material is diverse in that regard. Um, regarding the idea that we may be trying to tell students how to think, we maintain that the curriculum is built to sharpen students' thinking skills. We do not attempt to teach them uh what to think, but how to think critically, how to ask questions, how to reasonably disagree with their peers. And and that's what we believe we have with E L. Some of the teacher concerns that we um have received center around the idea that the curriculum is scripted or that they may um encounter problems with unpacking uh the curriculum because it is heavy, it is a heavy lift. Or that perhaps you've heard that there's not enough writing embedded in the curriculum. And our response, our position to that is that we have encouraged teachers to teach with integrity uh versus the term fidelity that you may hear. So we want them to make informed decisions about adaptations, about revising, about adding to the curriculum. Of course, we do not want the curriculum diluted as such that it's unfamiliar. Um, but they do have the ability to make sound decisions about the curriculum. Regarding the lack of planning time, um, with the heavy lift, our principals, in concert with our district leaders, are working on a plan to ensure that we increase the amount of training and professional development opportunities embedded in the school day. So that's in progress. And regarding writing, the skills block of E L is full of opportunities to write and to engage with text dependent analysis. That's a term, that's an exercise where you heard some of the speakers earlier speak about students being able to cite directly from the text. And so those opportunities are clearly a part of the comprehensive program that perhaps some of the schools have not had an opportunity to engage in as of yet because this is still new, and that's where we ask for the time to really unpack this curriculum fully. Teacher voice, this speaks to the previous slide where we maintain that teachers do have the ability to use their judgment, and we trust them with that judgment. And so, based on our district climate survey from the fall, eighty five percent of seventeen hundred plus teachers responded favorably to the following question, and that question was, to what extent are staff trusted to work in the way they think is best? And here's the response that we received. And so we want to assure you that we do not have a heavy hand in terms of allowing school leaders and teachers to really dissect the program and the materials in a way that is meaningful for their scholars. And so uh Mr. Grabowski opened the door earlier when he mentioned the cost to date of E L. And so while we've encumbered approximately ten million dollars for uh instructional materials such as E L, at this point, as you can see noted on this slide, we have uh procured in the amount of six million dollars. But the curriculum, in large part, because many of our schools are implementing, is paid for. Our duty and our responsibilities moving forward would be for our consumables, those things that we have to replenish year after year. We wouldn't have to continue with the heavy um dollar amounts moving forward. But of particular note that I would like to share, the South Carolina Department of Education paid for our Palmetto Literacy Schools use of E L, and they have already invested monies for the upcoming school year for the consumables. And so that is already at play, that is already um in process. Mr. Grabowski and Mr. Kennedy also opened the door on this conversation around the data. And so I intended anyway, because I expected to be conversation about how are you measuring two different assessments and displaying this information to us as valid, credible, reliable information? So the truth is, based on teacher and principal input, we made a shift on our interim assessment for the district. For many years, we've utilized MAP, Measures of Academic Progress. And based on the input and the feedback from our stakeholders at the schoolhouse, I already proved to be more user friendly for the practitioner. Uh, we receive more real time information on how to inform our instructional choices in the classroom with iReady. And so what you have here, what we present here, um, as reported on these slides, are the percentage of students meeting their mid-year targeted growth uh for grades one through five. And we start with the acceleration schools because the acceleration schools have been implementing the program the longest. And what we see here is while this is MAP compared to iReady, that there is a sizable, substantial, significant impact on how our scholars are faring this uh academic year. And so I will take the opportunity to qualify again what iReady and MAP have in common. They are both nationally normed, meaning there's a large sample size of scholars across the nation by which we gauge, by which we uh set these scores. Uh, they both measure our basic reading skills in terms of comprehension and vocabulary and such. And they both give us a high predictor of how our scholars will fare on our end of year summative assessment that Anita alluded to, our S C ready testing. And so for those reasons, we are sharing this data as a positive, as forward movement, and as our scholars making progress. And because I thought there might be a question about apples to apples and oranges to oranges, I wanted for illustrative purposes to share this next slide, which shows for our schools, again, these are our acceleration schools, who utilized iReady last year as an adaptive digital content. So it wasn't our interim assessment, but it was a a tool that is used daily uh for our scholars last year. And this year's use of iReady as an interim set assessment, you still see an eight point three percent increase. And so I share that just for the record to say that while the big profile shows iReady against MAP, when we did take a look, just just for argument's sake, at iReady to iReady, we still saw movement in a positive direction. The next slide highlights the ten schools that started mid-year last year. Uh, those schools opted in the middle of the year. Uh, some grade levels in some schools, the full complement in others. These schools are demonstrating ten point nine percentage points increase from last year to this year on their winter assessment. And then here are the balance of schools that began E L in August of twenty twenty two. Again, we are seeing positive, favorable indications that we're on the right track. Not not that this is a three year uh trend data, right, that you alluded to, Mr. Grabowski, but we believe if we stuck with the program, that's exactly what we would be able to prove and validate in terms of the impact that a guaranteed core viable and comprehensive curriculum will afford our scholars. And and finally, I think this is one of the last data slides. Uh, we profile, we highlight and feature our middle school grades that just began the program in August of twenty twenty two. And while growth here isn't as formidable or strong as we've seen in the elementary schools, we are studying and considering if the absence of the skills block, that's where we have word work and vocabulary work that's absent by the middle school component. We are studying and considering if that component in particular is impacting the moderate uh minimal, I should say, growth that we are seeing, but still trending in a positive direction nonetheless. Please.
And 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 might I know that when you, when we look at national MAP data, typically you see a student regression from fall to winter. That is more of a pattern of student test, testing data than significant gains in in the winter, the winter um testing window. So while uh Mr. Grabowski, to your point, a one point one percent increase might not be statistically significant, um, we are seeing gains versus regression, which is when we look nationally, what we see in a majority of of districts. Ms. Michelle, would you?
Thank you for that. So our our data analyst, our guru for all things data is behind us. And so she can speak more to um the metrics and the analysis and what the implications are for having two assessments to gauge against. We just happen to be, we just happen to be in a baseline year. But um, thank you for that add-on, um, Ms. Huggins. Maggie? And so want to wrap this segment up by highlighting some of the progress that we really are proud of, um, particularly for some of our acceleration schools. So very recently, last week, the State Department of Education released the school improvement designations across the state of South Carolina. And of the four schools to exit the comprehensive support and improvement status, that's the uh more dire of the designations, which indicates the schools are performing among the lowest five percent across the state of South Carolina. Our schools, we had two participating schools from the acceleration schools to come off of that list. And that's a huge deal for them. And then again, from the priority schools list, those schools performing in the lowest ten percent across the state of South Carolina, three schools came off of the list. And so progress is being made. Um, I think that's undeniable when we can see schools coming off of state designation lists. And so we just wanted to share that bit of information with you. And so next steps, from our point of view at the district office level, we believe our charge um is to continue to provide job embedded professional development for E L to make sure that we are progress monitoring adequately to ensure that we are on the right track. Mr. Kennedy alluded to that earlier. Um, the harm is when we do not course correct, if we're not on track. And then to engage all of our K through three, as you so graciously approve the monies for the funding for letters training to ensure that all of our literacy interventionists, our multilingual um teachers, special education teachers and administrators are equipped with the kindness of training that will allow us to advance our cause even further. And then to continue to partner, to partner with the teachers and leaders to augment, to revise, to modify the curriculum where it's applicable and where it's necessary. And then finally, we wanted to offer, from our point of view again, what we believe could potentially be risks of discontinuing E L. So I I said it earlier, and and I'll take this opportunity to reiterate. Whenever there's a major change or shift with curriculum, with assessment, there's inevitable regression and we lose ground. And we are um finally seeing some progress and and rebounding, recovering from some of the losses or some of the lagging data, I should characterize it as uh with E L. And so I'm not going to go bullet by bullet, but I will rest on bullet two for a second because I do believe, um, I was here in twenty eighteen when we went through advanced ed and the accreditation pro- process. I do believe we're at risk of not securing securing our district accreditation next year um without having that guaranteed and viable curriculum. Uh, our high schools in particular, so when we receive a district accreditation that outfits, that supports all of our campuses, high schools in particular will be charged with the individual accreditation process if we don't secure our district accreditation and not having in place, having in place, already trained, everybody's versed, everybody can articulate what we believe about literacy. If that's not in place, we do run the risk of losing our accreditation. And so the the funding, um, we've talked about retaining the folks who believe so passionately about this work and this curriculum. All of those are impacts as well. Um, but we wanted to be fair and transparent and clear about where our position is on this and and what we believe to be the impacts. And I believe that's our overview and the floor. I I believe I toss it back to the chair, Ms. Watley, for any uh questions.
Thank you very much for um taking the time to put this together. Um, I'll open it up now for discussion and I will expect order. Professionalism as well. Be professional. Is there anybody that would like to ask a question?
I have one question. It it's it's a big question. I just want to make sure it's it's clear. This was never mandated. So everything that you're telling us is the principals got together, they heard what they saw, they saw what they saw, and they requested this to be part. So the teachers at these schools that we get all these complaints about were part of a team that a principal made a decision to use this curriculum.
Fair, fair question. And so we started with the acceleration schools. They're they're under a clear mandate to accelerate growth and improvement. And so when we started with the ten schools, that was our opportunity to learn, to observe, uh, to send school teams to where the pilot was occurring so that they could get information directly. There's no better learning opportunity than seeing it in action. And so that's what happened, Mr. Grabowski, the ten schools in the acceleration learning community, they began the pilot in August of twenty twenty two. And then they reported back. We went and saw it in action. And then ten additional schools, eight eight acceleration schools, pardon me, and then ten additional schools decided I would like to participate as well. And this is because I was formerly the associate superintendent of the elementary learning c- community, I can speak emphatically and clearly that schools opted into this program. Uh, we didn't force or course or have to direct schools to sign on. They did so willingly. And so for building level principals and leaders to select, to opt in, to choose to participate, we believe and we trust that they get the ownership, they get the buy-in, they get consensus from the folks in their building. That doesn't mean one hundred percent of the the teachers and faculty signed on, but a majority did.
So I, oh, excuse me, go ahead. Uh, so I have one question about the E L A task force, all these wonderful members, but I'm not seeing anyone designated that's a teacher or a parent.
Couple of the, and I'll let you, but so teachers aren't expressly recognized on this list, but the instructional coaches, the principals are the teacher representatives, and that's a fear, that's a fear stance or position to take. And so that's why it was a pilot and not a straight mandatory initiative. We figure if we pilot, we give folks the opportunity to experience the curriculum and opt into it. Regarding parents, so there's a textbook adoption, and then there's a curricular adoption. Parents do not participate in curricular adoption. Usually, the experts in the field, the folks back there, they select the curriculum based on their areas of expertise. Whereas with textbooks, we do have participation for families to uh provide insight because we typically would have the materials at the schoolhouse for them to observe, weigh in on, and give their feedback on. Anything you want to add to that?
So E L does not have textbooks.
Correct, correct.
Ms. Simmons, you, Ms. Simmons, you you did very, very well. I'll I'll only add, Mrs. McKinney, that like Michelle said, um, in full transparency, there are no teacher names there. There are no parent names there because they weren't, they weren't expressly uh involved on the task force. Um, again, our job is to be very honest with you. But like Michelle also alluded, this was this wasn't a typical textbook adoption process. And I want to honor the work, and I know you joined me in honoring the work that Emily Woody led. Emily, if you'll throw your hand in the air. That the process was extensive in that it took in excess of right at five months and this team met weekly for multiple hours. And as you can see, did a thorough review of the curricular options that were there. So no ma'am, I think we're all, we would agree, Michelle and I would agree that if we could turn back the clock, which we can't, and we could go do it over. I think Ms. Woody would agree that including a teacher representatives and or parental parent representatives, particularly teachers might have been appropriate at this level, but the time commitment was somewhat obtrusive and hindered that somewhat. But again, fair point. Appreciate you making it. And the answer is your, what you observe is, is the case.
I have a question about the leading educators training that acceleration schools received. I realize it was costly and I'm wondering if that was the one reason why all teachers did it. Because I have heard that the, one of the more substantive claims is about the fact that professional development has been difficult. And so why didn't we go with the same model?
Fair enough. And Miss Haynes, if you want to start making your way to the podium so you can elaborate on my response. So leading educators supports the acceleration schools, but with much more than just EL. So they support our bridges implementation. They support our work with professional learning communities. So it's a way more comprehensive package that we've procured with them for acceleration purposes.
Correct. You did a great job. So leading educators has an arc of learning for the EL curriculum, and they also supported in math. Their training, professional development, they come to our district. We have professional development days that are designed for the 200 plus teachers all in one day. They also provide that support in walking through our schools, working with our coaches, working our instructional coaches, working with the principals. So they have the infrastructure that we need in every district, in all districts to assist with implementing new curriculum. So it was imperative, and that was prior to Carolyn Belcher coming and she made the decision to work with leading educators to help implement this curriculum. My previous experience in other districts has been the same. When you have new curriculum, you get outside providers to help you with the implementation of that. And leading educators has done an excellent job in doing so. In addition, we have a three-year contract with them and we're working closely with Ms. Simmons to help the rest of the district or others to pass that training on to the district instructional specialists under the direction of Mr. Davis and spread the work. So we're getting a lot from them with this three years of the contract so we can spread the work. So it's kind of like training the trainer and that is going to help our district as a whole.
So it's like the letters program?
Pardon me?
It's the same type of theory as the sustainability of the instructional, same thing as we're doing with letters.
Not entirely. So professional development can be covered under Title II, which is an alternate funding source, which is a stable funding source, multi-year funding source for the district. Yes, we did use a portion of ESSER, but there's also Title II funding available for professional development.
Ms. Waters, I'd like to address your question as to why we didn't use leading educators moving forward. So we actually got teacher input prior to convening the task force. And they had two main points. Number one, find something comprehensive. We're tired of piecing and parting and having to pull. So you saw in Witten Wisdom, for instance, was one of the ones, it doesn't have a embedded foundational skills curriculum. So Wilson Foundations is a separate product that is partnered with that, but it is not a full match. It takes the teachers orchestrating that. The second major point was we want to be trained and led and supported by the people who wrote the curriculum. So while we use leading educators in the acceleration schools, when we thought about the scale across the district, we were honoring the teacher requests. Number one, find something comprehensive. And number two, we want to learn directly from the people who wrote and produced this curriculum. And so that's why the difference between the two Ys, not everybody using leading educators, it was to honor the requests of the practitioners themselves.
And Mrs. Waters, I can really appreciate the question. In complete transparency, the transition to leading educators wasn't always easy either. It was a bit bumpy for teachers who were being asked to do more planning and more time. And so embedded in the acceleration schools model with Mrs. Haynes is more planning time for teachers, which Mr. Kennedy has asked us to examine and bring forward a budget item for consideration to Mrs. Williams and to the full board for all teachers, not only in our acceleration schools, but K-12. So even with leading educators, which provided an immense amount of support, there was still a heavy lift for teachers. So we went a second step, as did Jackie, fiercely advocating for acceleration schools and that increased planning time. So thank you again.
And one final point on that, but we have learned. We've learned that we have to make some adjustments. And so Dr. Davis, who is the head of curriculum instruction at this point, he and I are meeting with the folks with leading educators to figure out how we build capacity because at some point we have to back out of the vendor support, right? And enable, equip our leaders with the ability to lead the work.
Thank you. Quick question, two quick questions for you. I just want to reiterate again, most of the larger costs for the curriculum have already been uncovered. Now we're just looking at the replenishing of the things, what type of things are the replenishing things and how much would that?
So typically workbooks or items that our students will actually write in and now no longer, it's not usable after a given school year because they have already consumed it. That's why we call it consumables. And so those are the types of materials that we have to replenish year after year for the life, for really the life of the adoption or the life of the implementation.
Right. So now we've been really looking at a big cost issue here, but as far as the, how many years would a career, in your professional opinion, how many years would you need for this test out a curriculum to see whether it's working or whether we should take pieces of it out or just scrap it all together?
The standard in terms of an implementation is three to five years. That's for any implementation or any hired person. If somebody gets a new job, you barely want to give them three to five years to prove that they're effective at the job before you turn a corner, but that's a conversation for another day. Sorry.
And we are only barely within the second year right now?
We are, this is a first full year for the majority and year two for acceleration schools.
Thank you.
I just want to use my time wisely to say thank you. Having sat on a SACH review team for accreditation, knowing all about Cognia and also knowing about Advanced Ed, thank you for your work. This is a lot. Thank you for explaining the difference between a textbook review and a curricula review. I think that's very important to understand that there's a difference with different groups of people. Thank you for this presentation and helping us to understand why this is so necessary. Because, but the district as large as CCSD, it did not have an EL curriculum. And to put one in place and to dismantle it will be egregious. I only have one vote and I will use it wisely, but thank you for your work that you have put because I see you and just know that I would use my vote wisely and that's all I could do.
I also want to extend my gratitude to the staff for the work that the curriculum department has done on this. Having been involved with the curriculum development for the district for 20 years, I know how much work and heart has been put into this plan. And I am totally impressed that you started a pilot and that you had so many schools interested in the pilot and that they adopted to also pursue this journey. Because that is tremendous amount of support. It's never, like you said, it's never going to be 100%, but for the principals to go forward, to work with their teachers and know that they want to try something new, those principals wouldn't have accepted that challenge without knowing they had the teachers behind them. So this is tremendous amount of work. And I think that the curriculum department needs to be allowed to continue to implement on this, looking grade by grade, school by school at the implementation, looking at the professional development. You have received tremendous amount of teacher input by testimony and by written comments. You know where the, you know where the weaknesses are, you know where the strengths are. And you are working on a body of knowledge with all of that input to move forward. And I commend you on the work you've done.
Mr. Calvin? Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I, in contrast to a lot of the public comments that we've heard of last couple of days, we've read at this point, hundreds of emails from teachers and parents who are not in favor of this. And I take, I want to be dramatic, take, I say, I, on slide 19, you're, the phrases used is the content is too diverse and there's not enough white representation. Are you familiar with the term of a straw man argument? Because that's what's happening here. Nowhere have I ever read or heard that it's too white. What I have heard is that this curriculum is intertwined with Eva Mexkendy type concepts. I've read myself the educator guide that explicitly tells a teacher to ask students to examine whether they are exposed to racism or exposed to sexism. And that goes into define that sexism typically comes from white males. I wonder if, if there's some validity to both sides of this argument. One, the academic value of what's happening. And two, that perhaps some of the books that were chosen just probably shouldn't be in a third grade classroom. So my question to you would be this. If I were to walk into a, an average elementary school around this district without a principal present, are you confident about the feedback I would get from a teacher about how good this is?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Kelly. And so the slide you referenced came from feedback. We've received feedback in isolation of some of the feedback that the board has received. But to respond to your question about entering any given classroom and what we might see, I feel confident if the instructor, if the teacher is teaching the curriculum as laid out, that you would find suitable, appropriate and standards aligned content. And so we took the, and I don't want to take credit. This curriculum and instruction team took the time to establish a crosswalk document regarding the contents of EL and what's in our state standards. And everything that's embedded in EL is embedded in our state standards. And so with that legitimately, and I think I referenced this during my segment, that you have legitimately received concerns and it may have equaled 100 at this, over 100 at this point. But what I can qualify is that where parents have brought the concerns to the schoolhouse, the principals have been able to work in partnership with the families to receive the complaint or the concern and help them see in the curriculum or validate it in a way where we make a different decision about what we utilize or what reference do we, do we place in front of scholars or for particularly those items that are optional, because there's a lot of books that you've heard about that aren't required in EL. They are optional. And so our principals, one of which spoke last week, Ms. King at Sullivan's Island, took the time to hold family meetings, Zoom meetings, engagement sessions around her stakeholders' concerns. And this year we haven't heard any because they were allowed to work together. Ms. Watley referenced that last week. If we can hear both sides and come to terms, come to agreement, come to consensus maybe even, I think it feels better for everybody. You want to add on?
I think you, as always, did very well. Again, really appreciate your point. It's fair. One thing that we didn't highlight is that we have received significant feedback in some places, more so than others, about some of the sensitive and controversial topics introduced by pieces of the curriculum. And as such, we worked with, led by Terry Nichols. We worked with a group of people to review every piece of literature, whether required or supplemental. Every module in EL, the team developed a spreadsheet of where there were areas at various grade levels that might be, Mr. Kelly, controversial. And as part of that, Mr. Kennedy issued a directive that principals are to work with teachers and families to provide options to families, allow other opportunities to be available to students in situations where there are sensitive materials, controversial text, et cetera. So I think you, you said, if I walked into a classroom, would the feedback be commiserate or consistent with some of the things you're sharing with us here? I certainly think in the acceleration schools, if I ask Mrs. Haynes to respond to that, she would say, yes, sir. 100% of the time, no, sir. I can't even get 100% consensus from my three children at home, right? So, so 100% of the time, no. Would you hear more consistently in our acceleration schools? Yes, sir. In our schools that have just picked up implementation, I think Mr. Davis and Mrs. Woody and Ms. Simmons and Dr. Swearingen, who, I'm not sure if she's still with us, would say, are you here? I didn't mean to call you out that way, sister. I think they would say in the schools that have just come on board, you would, you would hear more mixed feedback, but they haven't had the opportunity yet for professional development, for experience with the curriculum as schools in our acceleration zone who have been doing this now for almost two full years. So again, a very fair question. I'm sorry that we did, I did a poor job overviewing what we had done to address controversial and sensitive topics of which our cabinets reviewed. And I think you'll get really consistent feedback in a majority of our schools and our other schools, I think, as they become more and more exposed and have opportunities for more professional development. We can emphatically suggest, as Ms. Haynes could, that the consistent, the feedback would be more consistent. Michelle?
It's not 100, it's not one for one, that's for sure, in terms of consensus and buy-in. And over time, I remember maybe my last year as a principal, 2018, we rolled out Bridges Math. And it was it was difficult. It was challenging and we heard a lot of similar, not, not exactly the same as this, but some of the concerns about the heavy lift and the unpacking of the curriculum. And so again, I've never met a new curricular process that hasn't been rocky or challenging or difficult. But we own that this is a challenge for some, but we are willing. We are willing to work with our school teams and strengthen our coaching core so that we can adequately respond to their challenges and empower them to make decisions that's best for the classroom. If you encounter a text that you believe is going to be a problem, you can forego that text. You can select a different text. But again, that is well taken. You can select a different text. Um, but again, that is well takes work and deliberation and articulation wide in a widespread way on our part. And so we still have work to do.
So I I just, I don't think I heard you answer my question. Did you get actual feedback from someone who said this was too white?
Yes, that's why we 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 wouldn't make this up. So
That's a quote from somebody?
Yeah.
Wow, people are nuts.
Well, I have a question. How is it possible that we can get teachers that do not agree with how this EL curriculum has been implemented? How do we get feedback from them without fear of retribution or backlash or them losing their jobs? Because I have had, like Mr. Ed, hundreds of emails from teachers and parents that believe that their voices are not being heard. And we've heard testimony two days in a row from people who love EL. But you know, I have a hard time with that because I've experienced EL firsthand. And I can tell you for a fact that it is not appropriate for kindergartners. And for the record, no, EL is not being taught to Head Start or CD kids, but it is being taught to kindergarten and above. And I have witnessed lessons for myself that I know are not appropriate for that age group. So I would like to see and I would like to know how we can get teachers that are in the classroom, that are on the front lines to come in and voice their opinions and their expertise on what this means to them, because that's what I want to see.
Well, I I think that they would argue that we we've had two of the acceleration schools full of teachers and stuff, but we haven't had a a variety of opinions or experiences. We've only had one side of the argument. But I echo echo what Mr. Kelly and um Ms. Bailey have said. I'm blown away at the number of emails that I have gotten and it's a different picture than what you all are painting. And it's not really being addressed and you you paint the controversial issues with a broad brush without actually talking about what has people so upset. Um, and it matters. It really matters. And if people are that upset, I've gotten even feedback from parents whose children have been singled out and isolated because the parent actually had the feeling to go and speak with and that was the compromise that you all made. I don't agree with that either. If something is that upsetting, we need to take a look at that and find out why it's upsetting. And if we should even have a context like that in in the school, I get like I loved those children talking about, I'm reading something that I can identify with. I appreciate that. But we we and we have lots of stories from here in the Low Country that really they could identify with because this is our heritage in our home.
The question at hand is how do you get feedback from teachers who don't necessarily um feel favorable about the curriculum? And I think the e- the emails you're receiving directly is is one way. But we've also instituted the um task force, uh steering committee for uh is the term led by Ms. Nichols, Adrian Lauder, and some of our other uh literacy uh team members to hear directly. We asked for at least two teachers per constituent area. And that's what they've been able to provide us with, the areas where they feel um there are some questionable uh materials. And then we have the focus groups. And so we are in earnest doing what we know to do. Convene a focus group, convene a steering committee and actually go into the schoolhouse and hear directly from teachers and teacher leaders. And so if you have some recommendations on what more we could do uh in in terms of, you know, one side, you know, showed up, showed up in force about their position and and their stance on the curriculum. And then you have another side who's writing to you uh as board members. And we're saying, uh, we thought we were honest in saying, we have received some of the letters as well um from a segment of the district. That there are some constituent districts, we haven't received anything um in the negative nature. And that's typically how it works when folks are pleased, satisfied and happy. They don't write and say, I'm pleased, satisfied and happy. They write when there's an issue. And so that's our attempt, that's our intention and our goal to respond where we feel like we can do better. We can make adjustments. We can revise um to the point where we still have integrity with the curriculum and it hasn't been diluted so much so that we no longer have a guaranteed viable comprehensive curriculum so that any outside entity or, you know, entity or body comes in to do an appraisal of our district and our programming, they will no longer say you have a comprehensive core curriculum across K through eight schools. And so we're open, we're open to your feedback, we're open to your suggestions on how we can receive more direct input um or survey information.
Well, I would also like to say, get ready, because you talk about teacher retention. Well, you have a slew of teachers that are about to walk out this district if something doesn't change with this curriculum. And that breaks my heart because I have a heart for teaching children. And I left that to come here so that they could have a voice and they're not being heard. Their silence is what's heartbreaking because they're afraid to lose their jobs and that's not right. That's not right.
They I thank, thank you so much for sharing um the feedback that you've gotten from teachers and from that for sharing your own experiences. Um, we certainly can't take away the inherent fear that people might have um in in a setting like this, but as you know, sup- 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 Supreme Court law gives teachers and other um s- state officials the opportunity to speak out on matters of public concern, of which this is one. Secondly, our policies are based on South Carolina Cota laws and and other parts of legislation that dictate that we are not able to retaliate against or to hold um teachers to one standard um as compared to others if they speak out on matters such as this. So um policy protects, and I'll share this with all teachers who are watching online or who will view this at a later time, policy protects educators. That they they do have a voice. They they do have First Amendment rights when they're speaking out, uh particularly on matters of public concern, again, of which this is one. Now, am am I saying that that's going to make um, you know, fifteen hundred teachers show up here tomorrow and say, gosh, what Anita and Michelle just shared with you is completely um untrue. I mean, no, ma'am. I'm I'm a human being. I know that's not going to happen, right? But 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 again, teachers by policy have that right and and they're speaking out to you um in anticipation that you might share those concerns with us already, right? So um teachers, again, do have that right. With Michelle and I can work with principals and leaders here and um the CCEA and the CTA and some other focus groups, SCEA, to figure out how we might go about getting more feedback and doing things differently. Again, I really appreciate you that, but appreciate you sharing that, but want you to know that from my perspective, um, we would not allow principals um or district leaders to retaliate against any employee who spoke out on the matter of public concern. But again, thank you.
Ms. Huggins, also, I had asked you before, when you told me you were assimilating this this task force to look into this, um, the the text and the uh accompanying materials uh that you went over and especially the controversial ones, I had asked you, can you make that public so that not only we can see it for transparency, but these parents that are so concerned and the teachers that are so concerned so that they can weigh in whether or not you actually address the concerns? Again, um depending on the the context of the materials, my if if this, I've said this to you and multiple times, if if it's something like that, it shouldn't be in any school. You know, our job here is reading, writing and arithmetic.
That, thank you for that, Mrs. Wally. Terry Nichols, who is not here with us tonight, they just finished the entire process review, Mr. Kennedy. I believe it was last week that you sent that memo. My days have started to run together. Week before last. Okay, so so we sent a memo out, Mrs. Watley, to all principals, which is of course a public document that um went by grade level and module number in in addressing where we, that task force that Ms. Nichols led, had concerns about potentially controversial and sensitive materials. Um, so we can certainly work with Mr. Kennedy uh to make resources available. Um, and we can discuss that with him. I'll I'll write that down. But it has just been completed in the last week and a half and we shared that information with principals via a memo from his office. And we can make that available to the board of trustees as well in this week's um board brief, along with that spreadsheet where that information was collected.
Will you also include the actions um that that the schools are taking for the parents who are raising concern?
I tell you what we can do is I can work with Mrs. Swearingen and and Mrs. Haynes and Dr. Williams um to to get that information in a comprehensive format and share that with you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, sir. But we did make some district level recommendations to Ms. Watley. I want you to know that what I've shared with you is accurate in that um replacement of certain texts, for example, exclusion of a text, for example, in kindergarten. That recommendation was made very explicitly. So we'll generate that for you, some of which we can provide by Friday. Um, the things we've already shared, aggregation from some of our principals about specific actions, like Mrs. King has taken some actions. I know Mrs. Fountain at Mount Pleasant Academy, some of our folks on James Island have taken some very um pointed action as well. Uh, we can, we will circle back with you on that. Mr. Calvin?
Yeah, I wanted to ask um our board members after seeing, after, I'm sure we went out, went to the schools and saw some of the yeah, curriculum being put in place over the last week or two, what would you take out of the third grade curriculum?
Sorry, I didn't understand. What was the beginning?
What would you, what book? You mentioned a book from the third grade. What would you take out?
It was a uh, it wasn't a book, it was a teacher's directive. So it was the uh, it was the description of what to, how to guide discussion, what the teacher should be asking the students.
Uh, so what was it? I'm 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 trying to get a a better understanding of what some of the concerns were.
So the the statement that I read, um, it it again, in the curriculum, it was uh, or in the um instructors' guide handbook, yeah, I'm not sure what the proper term is. Uh, it it said that it should invite, and this is for a third grade, invite students to uh tell stories about times when they've been impacted by racism. And then there was a parenthetical definition of racism. Um, and it and it specified that racism was typically found from white males. But the the they were typically the people that were racist. Um, and then it asked for um the students to share personal experiences of sexism. Uh, and then it it defined sexism um that it was typically against women. Um, so to the point about indoctrination, um, it is certainly a leading question. If I were to tell you or or if a student were to be instructed to tell me about a time that functionally a white male has discriminated or if speaking to a female student, tell me about a time when a man has discriminated against you. That that's how I was uh interpreting the uh prompt.
Okay, and um, Ms. Bailey, what what about the kindergarten curriculum? What would you take out of that?
We, our teachers are having to teach a lesson from three to four different manuals. The workload on them is so stressful. I have had a sister teacher in teaching letter recognition. Our children, the vocabulary that they are wanting them to write when they can't even recognize the letters in their name, how is that even possible in a kindergarten classroom? This is most inappropriate for them. They should be, the first few weeks of school, they should be learning letter recognition, letter sounds, how to write their own names. How in the world can a child write meteorologist or weatherman and they can't even spell their own name? That's ridiculous. And then the the modules where we had to sit with the kids for weeks exploring toys when they should have been reading, learning how to read. How how is that appropriate for children? And then the stories that they have at the age that they are, kindergartners, learning about racism. Racism, you're not born racist, you're taught racism. I've been teaching kids for so long, when they come into our classroom and they say, my mommy said I can't play with him because he's black, or my mommy says I can't play with her because she's white. Oh, my daddy said I can't play with her because she's Hispanic. When they come into that classroom, we teach them, you know what, doesn't matter what your skin color is. We're family here for the next four months, nine, four to nine months. We work together, we cooperate together, we we play together. These kids don't even know what color is until somebody points it out to them. Why are we teaching these kids about this at this age, five and six-year-olds? That doesn't make any sense to me. And that breaks people's hearts because our kids don't know anything about that. So why are we teaching them that because of the color of your skin, you have less advantages than somebody of a lighter skin? What does that have to do with the price of tea in China? Okay, if you can, if you can read, if you can write, if you can do math, if you can get in that classroom and show that teacher, hey, I'm ready, I'm here to learn. I want to get this. You can achieve anything. Doesn't matter if you're a boy or girl, if you're black, white, Hispanic or whatever. That's not appropriate in our children's classrooms as kindergartners.
So what grade should we start actually teaching students about America?
First of all, racism, your parents need to be teaching you about that at home, okay? Your your sexual ideology, your parents need to be teaching you that at home. That's not our job to teach that. That's the parent's job. When you start taking the role of the parent, these are not our children per se. They belong to somebody, okay? And what you believe and what you want them to learn may not be what that parent wants them to learn at that age because it's not appropriate for them right then. We don't get to determine when it's appropriate for these kids to learn that. Their parents get to determine that. So that's my stance on that.
So it um um, Ms. Ms. McKinney is um asking the question, is the presentation over and can we move on? There there is a lot here that we could discuss, but it is nine thirty in the evening. Mm-hmm. And and I do think that we need a robust discussion about this stuff because um you know, I, this is again, an area where I don't think we're hearing one another and we need to be, because this is really important. Thank you. Okay. So is there a motion on the floor regarding the presentations?
So I want to repeat what I think the entire board um has expressed is appreciation for such depth and such transparency in a in a report that we all needed, we all needed. Um, I'm moved to add to the board agenda for the superintendent and staff to engage ELA textbook curricula adoption process over the next three months that involves all stakeholders, including but not limited to teachers, parents and community members. The review process should include state-approved ELA curricular series that are based in the science of reading, but should exclude EL. The process may include curricula not on the state list if it's based on the science of reading. A recommendation for a new series adoption should be made to the board by June the sixth, twenty twenty-three.
A second emotion.
I have a question for discussion, or I guess a statement for discussion.
Your microphone.
Yeah, um, so according to policy, it's not really the board's responsibility to approve curriculum um at all. And in fact, policy EG IG, excuse me, um, says that the Board of Trustees expects the administration with the assistance of appropriate staff to implement curriculum aligned with state content standards. Um, and so the question I have is whether this entire conversation is in bounds. I think it has touched a lot of corners. Um, you know, lots of, you know, personal ideology. We all also have seen very clear data that the curriculum is working. We also saw very clear evidence that the district went through grueling We also saw very clear evidence that the district went through grueling process or a grueling process to determine which curriculum they would use. And I think that that's actually the spirit of this document, this policy I G is that we entrust the people who not only have the knowledge and expertise, but the capacity to choose and that we as a board, especially with so many of us so new, and I'm including myself in that because two years is is no match to the time that these folks have spent with this type of material. I would say that this is not only an irresponsible and reckless decision, but it's also completely out of bounds.
I have a question also. What is the background on the motion?
Um, addressing public concerns. Is that what you mean?
Yes, I would like to more more about why we only, why are we excluding E L on this one? Is it only because of the?
But because it's been reviewed and I like was mentioned tonight value the time of staff, parents and teachers. And I, I think the presentation was so excellent. We understand E L.
Right. And I think that's what I was about to get to as well, because we we're going to exclude E L because it's already been reviewed. We also reviewed four other ones as well back into twenty twenty when they were coming up with this process. And to select.
Right, but my motion wants to include all stakeholders. And so that would make it different.
Well, no, I'm saying because they already, I'm going back to the presentation. They looked at Core Core Knowledge Language Arcs. They looked at E L Education. They looked at McGraw Hill Open Court. They looked at Whit Wisdom. They've already been reviewed.
Okay, I have a, I like to make a statement on that because when I was here in July for that. They brought, the people who brought the presentation for the E L curriculum, they only brought data on E L. And they they was asked by Ms. Cindy Coats if they had the data for the other, I think it was three or four curriculums, and they said they didn't bring it. And I'm not understanding if they didn't bring the data then and the board approved that E L curriculum without reviewing the data. How did we get here without reviewing it back in July?
The board didn't, the the board is not required to review everything that they consider. They brought to us a recommendation for E L.
But it wasn't brought at all. The other data wasn't brought at all.
The point is they didn't have to because they were bringing forward their recommendation. The other thing is, at the end of the day, to to Mr. Calhoun's point, excluding E L and, you know, to Ms. McKinney's point, it's a different process that you're requesting. But excluding E L means that E L alone doesn't get the benefit of that additional process. And so I'm just not sure why except E L would be there either. And the other thing is, again, if the staff has already vetted this curriculum, it was piloted, it was opted into. It's already been proven that folks believe that it is a good curriculum. And then it's been proven that it is a good curriculum. Why are we wasting their time with another review for a curriculum we've paid for, we've been implementing? And actually, in response to community concerns, what we should be doing is simply engaging the community to chronicle those concerns and see if we can respond to it within our current curriculum.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so sorry, let me, let me state this about the about this timeline. So so you've heard, we've heard staff, academic staff talk about it took five months with a full team evaluating four or five curricula several hours per week. Seth, we have talked about this three month timeline. And it's impossible to do what you're asking us to do. It's impossible to start March one, do the complete review, bring bring all the stakeholders together, hold the meetings, do the procurement process, get it in, Sean has left, get it into the budget and start the the professional development for teachers this summer, which they are not available this summer. It is impossible. I've stated that I support the E L curriculum. Ms. Waters has said that Policy I G gives the responsibility for curriculum adoption to the superintendent and staff. I've talked with General Counsel about that. That's, I think, your interpretation. So I, so it is not possible to go through this type of review with I don't even know how many curricula curriculas are available by the state. Even if it's only two, it's not possible to do what is being asked to do here.
So if we, if the other curricula that were mentioned in the report were studied and we still have that data, doesn't that give us a head start in an evaluation?
So so ma'am, when I pull the task force together, unless there's ten people, it takes me two or three weeks just to get people to agree on on an initial meeting. Then when we have the initial meeting, we've got to determine a schedule of our work activities. We're talking far more than ten people within the seventy-five count home building. We're talking about people all over the county that are not even part of the school district. So it's it is not possible to even to pull the task force together and get that 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 work project up and running, I would say even by the end of March. We just simply do not have enough time to go through a curricula review process that 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 will ensure that the data that we've been showing on student achievement will be addressed this coming August when the school starts. It is not possible.
So you don't have the previous data from before? There was a slide.
I'm sorry, ask me, ask me the question again.
The review. Oh, Ms. McKinney, would you please repeat your question?
Certainly. So my question was, the other curricula that were reviewed that are stated on the slide, do we still have the review and information which would give us a step forward in looking at other curriculum? As as Ms. Bailey referred to, that they had reviews on them, they did not bring them to that meeting.
Well, I'm not sure about the meeting in July that Ms. That you referred to Ms. Bailey, I just don't recall that meeting. I do remember that's when I think the E L.
That was the FOIA issue meeting.
That, yes.
Same one.
So I do remember some some components of that. However, I don't, so I I don't know what 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 data we currently have. But I do know the staff have told me what the the curriculum adoption process entails. And it entails a lot of work that cannot get accomplished in the timeline that's laid out in this this motion.
Mr. Grabowski, if we were to get rid of this, how much money would we essentially be end up losing?
I'm sorry. I was reading something. Can you repeat?
They were, if we were to get rid of this curriculum, how much money will we end up losing right now? If we have a contract till next to twenty twenty-four, we already have all these materials or whatnot. How much money are we on the table for?
Well, I I I think it's a good question. I also, to Mr. Kennedy's point, because we're going into budgeting and everything, we don't have something sitting here to look at. I think it's very unrealistic to think that we're going to be putting something in place by September. So, you know, I I agree with your point. I think we're invested into it about ten million dollars, but I also see the procedural problem. I've heard, you know, I know we have a motion pending. I like what I hear in the sense that it, you understand there is a problem because I've never received so many emails against something, yet we see a lot of support and I have seen a lot of good out of the E L through the acceleration schools, hands down. But to answer your point, I think we're in on the hook for ten million. But at the same time, if we're going to implement a new new curriculum, we're going through a whole process. I'm just, you know, more concerned about accreditation. You need to give things time. I, what I heard is that this was not mandated. So they, there is a choice. And I think that's got to be put out very clearly that there is a choice and the public must know that and the teachers must know that and the parents must know that. So.
The other issue too is that the state is not going to be
Correct.
So, you know, we're going to be on the hook. It it just seems to me that we should be following the Policy I G and let the Department of Curriculum Instruction work to continue the implementation. We're very new into this implementation. You've heard that it takes a while. I think we, you know, have plenty of testimony to look at the concerns and and staff. The curriculum department needs to address those concerns, looking grade by grade, school by school. I know I have received input from parents and I would check with staff. Sometimes it was about a book and it wasn't even a book that was the E L curriculum. And I've sent and I've asked teachers if I could share their points of interest and they have said yes. So I think that we just really need to just continue right now. And and I think by the spring, we will have new test results that we can take a look at. You know, what's happening? We'll address the I ready to I ready data. And then we can, you know, have a clearer picture of of the decision. I think it's just important to let the curriculum department do their jobs, work with what they have, work with the schools, the teachers, let the principals get parent input and continue the work.
And I would just like to say, Mr. Karosky, we have gotten just as many emails on the prayer policy. And as a board, I think we have to start being proactive and not reactive and come up with solutions. I think that Ms. Simmons has offered us solutions about the task force, the the working groups. Ms. Waters has offered community engagement sessions. If we can, if we start being reactive and changing things, then we have set precedent. So let's look for solutions and how we can work with what we currently have. Unless it's something that's, you know, really harmful.
Well, my suggestion is we find the data for the three curric, the three to four curriculums that we've already had. And we need to go over that and review it. So, yes.
Which data are you looking for? Yeah, I'm asking like, like what from? Yeah, I'm here. I'm asking, what is it from these different ones, the Core Knowledge Language Arcs, McGraw Hill Open Court, Whit Wisdom?
What I would like to see is teachers in the district that come to a round table and for the teachers to do an overview of these curriculum to see what best fits the needs of the children in the district, not somebody who's not in the classroom, but somebody who's in the classroom every day. And that has to plan these lessons. I would like to see that.
So you want to put it to put together a pilot for four different, three different curriculums at this point with Core Knowledge?
No, that's not. The teacher input.
So there's two, there's two different things at play here. Ms. Carlotta's point and and also what Ms. McKinney has brought up is two different things. So we have the data already for the other curriculum reviews. But that wasn't brought forward. And so this motion is asking, let's see it all. So we didn't see the data from the other curriculum reviews, correct? Which is why she says, let's exclude the E L. You've just done a lengthy presentation on it. We would like to see now the others as well and let's do a comparison. I'd like to know what data you're looking at because we haven't implemented those other four programs. So what data would we have about our students' achievement? All we had was a review of those curricular programs. And the task force made a decision on which one would be K through eight, which one? I mean, they had, they laid out their criteria. So the data, they would not have be able to present the kind of presentation they just did with those other curricular materials because they've not been implementing. I mean, I get having, you know, teacher input and round table and all of that, but we're not going to have any data.
Although I I may have worded it wrong or incorrectly, the information on the curriculums that they investigated, that they researched, because I have not seen any of that being brought forward, but this little excerpt.
Well, no, that's.
Right here today.
Yeah, I'm looking at our reports right now. So within the, within the the presentation, they have the hyperlinks to it that has all the data for from Ed Reports on the implementation of the on the different implementations curriculum. So like the kindergarten text quality building knowledge, first grade, second grade, going all the way down to eighth grade. And has usability, it has usability. You can find out all on Ed Reports. So is that the data that you're looking for?
The data on the curriculum that was presented.
The curriculums that are rooted in the science of reading, I feel like we're getting nowhere here. We're just kind of.
Well, Ms. Watley, I do have another thing about the motion itself, and I want to make sure this doesn't get skipped. We keep saying, you know, we're excluding E L because we already have the data. But the last sentence of the motion is a recommendation for a new series adoption should be made to the board. So it's actually not as, you know, harmless as just researching what we have in before. You're actually asking for a recommendation for a new series. And so in making this motion, you're effectively eliminating E L at the same time.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly. Not exactly. It's it's. No, not exactly. You just don't want anything else to be compared to. It's asking for a comparison.
Leah, it says a recommendation for a new series.
That's one.
Which means bring, bring to the board. It's the, it's first of all, it's the final sentence. And, you know, when you, when you write a paragraph, typically that last point that you make is the one you're trying to hit home. And it's even if it were in the middle of the paragraph, it's asking for a new series recommendation. And that there's no way to state that differently to make it, it is what it is.
I understand what is written. Ms. McKinney, since you wrote the motion, why don't you speak to it?
And if that comes before the board and the board does not see it within the budget, it will be voted down. The way I understand, we, yes, staff implements curriculum. We approve the line item in the budget for what it will cost to implement it. And if the board does not agree, if this is voted down, then it is voted down. If it is voted up, it is voted up.
I just wonder how, Mr. Kennedy had something.
So the the curriculum, the curriculum has already been selected. It has been budgeted.
I thought it was optional.
Huh?
You said it was optional.
I said, what's optional? Six million dollars has been spent on it. Ms. Simmons said that the state has has brought the curriculum for twenty-five Palmetto project schools. So if we were, whatever curriculum we would put in that's different, the state's not going to pay for those twenty-five schools that they've already paid for. So we're we're talking about, instead of ten million dollars, we're talking about the ten million dollars. We've, we have committed that we would have to repeat, so twenty million dollars. And then whatever the state has put in, we have to put that in. So we'd probably be twenty-five, thirty million dollars. And that is from from an economic standpoint, it is not, it's not feasible. The timeline is not feasible. I'm telling you, the timeline is not feasible. This motion is telling me to do something that I'm telling you is not possible to do.
Well, and in light of the fact that all kids are actually up on reading. And we keep sort of splintering and only talking about certain groups just because of the way the information came to us. But we also shouldn't overstep the fact that all kids are up according to the results. So this is not just impacting black and brown students. This is impacting all children positively according to the data. So also, in in addition to everything Mr. Kennedy has said, why even do it when it's working for all children? And another thing that was sort of misstated is that only two schools came and spoke for the curriculum. We actually had students from Sullivan's Island. We had students from downtown Johns Island. We had students from Baptist Hill area, Hollywood. I'm sorry, you know, I always call it the high school, North Charleston, West Ashley. We actually had representation from all across this district as well as the data. So what is the point in this?
I think we're losing though, we're getting lost here. And I agree, you just can't be reactive. You really have to slow down. You have to look at this. We need more time to prove it. The the cost issue, but it doesn't stop looking at new curriculums for the future. I think that's, you know, the critical thing because at some point you may find out that the state's not approving, because right now the state's only approving this, as I understand it, for the accelerated schools. They haven't opened it up for all, approval to all schools yet.
Palmetto Literacy Project Schools, which is half of the schools participating at this point, when they do. And I don't want to.
So they've actually been expanding it over time as they get. So they've, they've actually been expanding it over time as they get.
There's also pending litigation surrounding EL, which isn't going to go away. And then we've got even bills that are pending being passed. So that's also, you know, got to figure that out monetarily. But we still keep getting away from Ms. McKinney's original question about the data on the ties into the motion that she made. You know, it's not fair to just look at the one. We need to look at the others.
So can we make a?
I, I just think it needs to be just so clear that we're not advocating getting rid of EL.
Okay, I think.
I think that's the, I think that's the most important thing that has to be stated. I mean, the motion is maybe for looking at more curriculums.
Especially since we all want what's best.
Following Dr. Kennedy and staff's statement of what is logically possible, this is not going to happen in September. It may happen in another year and then we will hold the district accountable for not taking care of all these parents that are writing all these nasty, teachers that are writing all these, you know, interesting emails to us, you know, complaining something else. Because I would like to give the task force some time to address their concerns. And you're right, I will be sending you, CCing you all these emails and asking why this isn't being addressed. But at the same time, I just don't want this motion to show up as being something that's stopping something that we know we can't do.
Right. So how about we do this with a friendly amendment of taking out that last sentence?
It's more than the last sentence.
And what else could we look at to make this just a review of other curriculums? And leave an EL alone, but we're just going to review other curriculums.
I, I, I'm not in favor of removing the last sentence.
If it's just a review of other curriculums and getting the data on other curriculums, let's take anything that mentions EL out of this and just review other curriculum.
I'm not in favor of that because if the data proves that something else is better, I want that.
But we already have, we already have the data on EL, so let's just review other curriculums.
And that wouldn't preclude you from choosing something else. Removing that sentence does not preclude us from going any different direction, but keeping it actually mandates that we are.
It doesn't mandate, it's a recommendation.
And so with the recommendation, they can give us a recommendation for it, but. Yeah, let's just review other.
Pam, it's your motion.
I am leaving the motion as is, is.
You'll have to ask for a second. I, I second. So the, and I've seconded earlier, so let's, we've, we're closed the discussion. We've been at this now for almost a half an hour, so let's go ahead and take a vote on the motion as is.
This is unacceptable.
It is. Stand out of policy.
Absolutely. If we, can we give Mr. Kelly to weigh in on the policy part of it? Can we actually review, put in curriculum within our policy?
I'd be happy to weigh in, but the, the, Ms. Watley closed discussion, if you're willing to, I'd be happy to weigh in.
I, considering the time and we're not really, this is fruitless, let's go forward with the vote. Unless you have strong feelings, otherwise, Mr. Kelly.
And, and I know it's, I know it's a late hour, but this is important. So again, if this, if this is a positive vote, you know, for this motion, I'm, I'm, I've told you that June 6, it's impossible. It is impossible. Regardless of whether I have the authority as superintendent to adopt the curriculum, which our council says I do, it is impossible to go through this review, review process and put in a new curriculum for August of next, this, this upcoming school year.
I know a motion is on the floor, but I would like to hear from counsel.
Policy, policy is very clear, says. The Board of Trustees expects the administration with the assistance of appropriate staff to implement curricula aligned with state content standards that enable students to successfully complete their individual graduation plans, thus ensuring their college career and ready. The board really doesn't have any involvement in curriculum under Policy IG. I mean, you can read it, it's very clear.
But, but we do have a voice when it comes to the budget and what line items address curriculum. Is that correct?
You, you vote on the budget. That is correct.
It's also noteworthy that the, we spent a good bit of time at the beginning of this meeting, what, like 24 hours ago, talking about precedents that was set in July of eight, July 18th of last year. The previous board did actively approve EL. So at least the understanding at that time was that the board is involved in the approve or disapproval of, of a curriculum.
I think that a misstep in previous years does not justify us moving forward inappropriately from here. And, I mean, as a person who was on that board, it, it just didn't come up whether we were within policy or not and there was, you know, pretty strong support. But I think when you know better, you do do better. And, and we have this board, especially the new members, I've heard many mention just how much you're attempting to set yourselves apart from previous boards. So we do need to be in alignment with policy if we're going to do that because the reputation of the Charleston County School Board has always been that it's, you know, sort of been anarchy and has not operated within bounds. And so I don't think we need to continue down that path. And I say that owning that I was there and, and didn't check that it wasn't in my authority to do so.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I, it's a very good point and a, and a welcomed caution as, as doing things right. As CSU said, do it right just because it's right. Do what's right simply because it's right. I, I fully support that.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Okay, closing discussions again. Let's go ahead and vote on the motion. Look at the window and see if your vote is reflected accurately. Okay, with that, the motion fails. Moving to the next item, determining agenda items, moving to potential consent. I believe item 7A moves to potential consent. Ms. Trudy, are you able to weigh in on, did anything else? Nothing goes to consent? So we didn't have unanimous on 7A?
6A.
What about 6A?
JKA.
No, no, 7A was JKA. That's what I said I believed was consent. I believe that was unanimous. Hold on, I've got too many people speaking at once.
This one was the consent for testing, 6C, did that go to consent?
Ms. Ms. Trudy, would you, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you.
That's correct. I think she just.
Right, but if something gets unanimous, is voted on unanimously, it automatically goes to consent. And I was thinking the only thing that we got a unanimous vote on was JKA, which is item 7A.
You'll approve the consent agenda at the next meeting. So, that's correct.
6A.
No, on, on here, it says item 7A is policy JKA corporal punishment for second reading. That's what I have online. The upcoming meetings, our next one will be 2/27 for our regularly scheduled board meeting. And then the second Monday of March will be our next Cal meeting. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.